Palm Springs regular city council meeting of May 7, 2020 to order. City manager David Reddy will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America. One nation, under God, indivisible, first and just for all.
Great. Thank you. City clerk, please conduct a roll call.
Councilmember Garner.
President.
Councilmember Middleton.
Present.
Councilmember Woods.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Here.
And Mayor Kors. All council is present.
Great. Next item on the agenda is presentations. City manager, I have a presentation as you know. Are there any other ones?
That's all, Mayor. Just the one of yours.
Okay. So I wanted to provide an update on... You need to mute the... Okay. So I'm going to provide an update on the work of the task force that was put together for tourism and business organizations related to the economic and reopening of Palm Springs' economy as that moves forward. I want to share the Tourism and Business Task Force is made up of representatives from the city, Agua Caliente Bandicula Indians, Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism and Convention Center, the Greater Palm Springs Convention and Visitors Bureau, and other tourism and business organizations. The goals of the task force include bringing together leadership of tourism business organizations and partners to provide a weekly forum for them to hear from one another and the city, report back to their memberships, and bring issues from their membership back to the task force. It's also a venue in which we discuss how tourism will change once we are able to safely welcome back guests, and how we're going to have marketing campaigns from both the conventions and Visitors Bureau and the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism ready ahead of time so they're ready to launch when that time comes. It also includes reports from members who are also on the Coachella Valley Task Force and the County Task Force, so we get information on what they are working on and we can provide input to those efforts. And that last point's especially important because Palm Springs currently doesn't have a representative on the county task force. I've asked Supervisor Perez that one or two reps be included, given Palm Springs is the location of both the airport and the convention center for this region, and they're critical to our tourism economy here in the Coachella Valley, and he said he has submitted names, two names from Palm Springs for that purpose. I want to share a little bit of the work from the first two task force meetings and what we are tackling right now. So the task force is working on how to provide businesses a discounted way to get needed supplies like hand sanitizer, disinfectant, face covering, and gloves. I have asked Supervisor Perez for the county to consider using their massive buying power to obtain these supplies for businesses and to use some of the $440 million the county received from the federal government under the CARES Act for this purpose. I did hear back today from his office that they are working on this, and we hope we'll have some more information to share in the next week or two. However, given that businesses are being allowed to open under the governor's phase two, which we'll discuss later in the meeting, we know that these supplies are needed as soon as possible. I'm really pleased that Aftab Dada from the Palm Springs Hilton, who is also chairman of the Palm Springs Hospitality Association, and PS Resorts is a board member of the Palm Springs Chamber of Commerce, has generally offered to use his corporate buying power to acquire these supplies at a discount for all Palm Springs businesses. Nona Watson, the CEO of the Chamber of Commerce, spoke with Dr. Reddy today, and she's generally offered to help facilitate the ordering process through the chamber to get to the Hilton, and will be setting up an online ordering form. So this is the kind of work the task force is doing to help all of our businesses, and we really appreciate the leadership from both Aftab Dada and the Chamber for taking this on. Another area we're focusing on is working on obtaining permission from the state to allow us to look at closing streets, utilizing parking lots and public parking spaces, and other options to increase outdoor space for our restaurants and bars once they're allowed to reopen. Given we know that some states are only allowing restaurants, for example, to utilize 25% of their existing capacity for in-person dining, that won't work very well. A lot of restaurants, most, will lose money if they have 75 or 50% less seats. And our goal is to increase capacity by utilizing outside space in a safe manner. Outdoor dining can work in Palm Springs, and we're working with the four representatives of restaurants and bars who are on the task force to come up with a proposal and rules on how this could be operational, and I've spoken with Assemblymember Mays on how we can advocate this in the state to allow this through the alcohol and beverage control program, which currently does not allow it. Finally, I want to share that the Palm Springs Bureau of Tourism and the Convention and Visitors Bureau have presented their marketing plans to the task force, which you can find on our website. But they're not only working on plans for when we can safely allow visitors to return to Palm Springs. Both of the organizations, which are city funds, and provides full support for the Bureau of Tourism, and we provide some financial support for the Convention and Visitors Bureau, have created advertisements that they're using in our market here in the Coachella Valley to help our local businesses, especially restaurants open for takeout and delivery. In addition, both organizations are listing restaurants and other businesses that are open or where people can buy gift cards as well. So I wanted to just show council and the public one ad from each of the organizations, and that'll conclude the presentation. So Erin, if that can get done, that would be great. Oh, wow, we can see it.
Help our community and restaurants during this challenging time by ordering takeout for your next meal. Check dinegps.com for a list of restaurants offering curbside pickup and delivery. Stay in, take out. Restaurants and retailers.
Okay. Thank you. With no other presentations, our next item is acceptance of the agenda. The city council will discuss the order of the agenda. They amend the order, add urgency items, note extensions or no votes on the consent calendar items, or request consent calendar items to remove for separate discussion. I would like to entertain a motion for acceptance of the agenda. Are there any items any council member would like removed for separate discussion or vote? Councilmember Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On item 1B, I need to recuse on a travel reimbursement check that was... that I received.
Okay. 1B, Councilmember Middleton recused. Councilmember Mayor Pro Tim Holstich, I submit.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to pull for separate discussion quickly 1A as an apple, and then 1F.
Good choice. Anyone else? Okay, then. So if we can get a motion to accept the agenda noting the extension of Councilmember Middleton on item 1B and excluding items 1A and 1F for separate discussion and vote.
So moved.
Seconded.
Okay. Motion by Councilmember Woods, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Councilmember Woods.
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Holstich.
Yes.
Councilmember Garner.
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton.
Yes.
Mayor Kors.
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Great. Thank you. Next is report of closed session. City Attorney Ballinger, can you please provide a report of the closed session?
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council and members of the public. The city council met in closed session to discuss the items that are listed on the agenda earlier this afternoon, and there was no reportable action.
Great. Thank you very much. Our next item is public testimony on non-public hearing, agenda items only. This time has been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on non-public hearing agenda items. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. You're asked to please begin your time by telling us what agenda item or items you're speaking about. Please note that testimony for public hearings will be taken at the time of the public hearing, and general public comment for subjects not on the agenda will be taken later in the evening. Tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers via telephone. City clerk, please begin.
Steve Moses, please leave a message.
Yes.
This is Anthony Mejia calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You are live with the city council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Okay, thank you. I think that reopening businesses will actually put the community in danger because it has not been ascertained whether or not we have indeed passed that curve, and if we do not know that, then the businesses shouldn't be open so that we don't put our public in jeopardy. I also think that if there were to be any openings, that social distancing and masks need to be utilized to not only protect ourselves but each other. I think that we owe this to the community, and I think that we need to take into consideration how impacted our healthcare facilities are going to be should we have a boomerang effect wherein we decide to open up certain businesses, and, you know, 14 days from then, we experience a greater amount of need. Those are my concerns, and I don't want to take up too much of your time.
Okay. Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello, Charles Brobeck.
Yes.
This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council. You are live at the city council meeting, and you can begin your two minutes when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. My name is Charles Brobeck, a resident of Palm Springs and president of the O'Donnell Golf Club. I'm speaking tonight in reference to agenda item 4A. The O'Donnell Golf Club submitted a written plan this afternoon for reopening the golf course. The plan was forwarded to the city manager and director of Parks and Recreation. In your packet to The O'Donnell Golf Club submitted a written plan this afternoon for reopening the golf course. The plan was forwarded to the city manager and director of Parks and Recreation. In your packet tonight for this agenda item is a memorandum we put together that will give you a snapshot of what we put together for our plan. I'd like to say that we support the recommendations in the staff report, and we ask for consideration to leave our flag sticks in place. We have modified our cups to allow a safe removal of the ball without touching the flag or surrounding area. We are looking forward to reopening the O'Donnell Golf Club as soon as possible, and thank you very much for your time.
Hello, Mr. Sandy Williams, this is Anthony calling
Yes, it is.
Palm Springs City Council meeting, and you're live, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, good evening. My name is Alexander Williams. I'm a Palm Springs homeowner. I live in Seven Lakes Golf and Country Club community, and I'm a member of the Golf Committee. At the outset, let me say that all of us in Palm Springs owe you and all our public officials a debt of gratitude for the quick action you took to implement the shelter-in-place rules and other distancing measures. You saved many lives and will continue to do so. I and my colleagues believe that reopening golf courses with appropriate restrictions is entirely consistent with your desire to protect the public health. Golf is an activity that can be modified and regulated so that it does not pose a threat to the safety of golfers, golf course employees, or nearby residents. Further, golf is especially important to the culture of Palm Springs, and is an activity that is intrinsically healthy for players of all ages and abilities. At Seven Lakes, and I'm sure at other golf courses in Palm Springs, we have developed a stringent protocol based on recommendations from the National Golf Course Owners Association, the USGA, Riverside County, the City of Palm Springs, and your subcommittee. We have provided your subcommittee with a copy of our proposed protocol. Responsibility for assuring that the protocol is strictly observed rests with the club general manager and the golf professionals. We believe this protocol assures that playing golf will not pose any danger to the public health, and we urge you to allow the golf courses in Palm Springs to reopen. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
Steve Moses.
Steve, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs
Oh, thank you. I called bounced by mistake before. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no problem. You have two minutes to begin your comments, and if you are watching the meeting, can you turn down the volume?
Yeah, I've just walked into a different room. I'm in a different room. Am I on now?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mayor Coors, Mayor Protem Hostage, council members, I'm Steve Moses, full-time Palm Springs resident and avid, if mediocre, golfer. I want to thank all of you for putting up with my numerous phone calls and emails. I want to especially thank the Subcommittee on Golf, Tennis, and Pickleball for their hard work, and I enthusiastically endorse their recommendation, item 4A, tonight. I endorse it with one tiny tweak. The requirement that flags be eliminated should be withdrawn. Without a flag on the green, it is very difficult to direct an It should be safe enough, as state and county rules state, require that the flags not be touched. That's what Indian Canyon and Cimarron and other courses in Coachella Valley that I've played in the last two weeks require. Please adopt your proposal that let the flags stay untouched in the cups, and thanks again. Good night.
Hello.
Roman Bronkowski.
Yes.
This is Anthony calling from the City Council meeting. You are live with the City Council, and you have two minutes.
Okay, thank you very much. Hello, Mayor and City Council, thank you so much for letting me testify tonight, and my name is Roman Bronkowski, and I am a 25-year resident of the wonderful city of Palm Springs and a 16-year resident of Seven Lakes Country Club. As I sit here right now, I'm looking out at the golf course, and I have to say that I really support everything that Mr. Williams has said, and please rest assured that Seven Lakes is a very special place, and because of that, all of our neighbors know each other, they all know where people live, and anyone that their ball goes out of anywhere that's not supposed to, it's immediately called into the pro shop, and our fantastic pro or someone that's there is coming out before you even get back to tell you that you shouldn't have done this. So we pretty much have always self-monitored, and we've been using these protocols, which they have provided to you and recommended. We have had these in place since March, very beginning of March, when this was evident that there was health concerns and that we needed to take precautions immediately. And we've been proactive, and we will continue to do so. And thank you very much for your time, and I do really hope we can golf tomorrow. Thank you so much.
Hello.
Hello, John Ryan, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting, and you are live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
I'm John Ryan, I'm a full-time resident of Palm Springs. I'm calling to support the City Council staff report to open tennis and pickleball courts in HOAs and public courts. The city staff did an excellent job in writing the recommendations. They were well thought out. I'm an active 74-year-old man who has not been able to play pickleball for the last two weeks because the city council did not allow the courts to continue to be open, although the Riverside County Health Officer did allow them to be open. City staff has recommended strict guidelines for the use of tennis and pickleball courts. I'm willing to abide by those guidelines. I feel the guidelines would be effective in allowing for tennis and pickleball play while safeguarding the health of the players and the community. Please vote to open tennis and pickleball courts. Thank you.
Mariel Nunez.
Yes, this is she.
Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live, and you have two minutes with the council.
Thank you so much. Thank you, this is Mayor Bob Nunez. Thank you, Mayor and Palm Springs City Council. Speaking in behalf of California Partnership, Todek, and Bayan Ihan, and we're asking, this is item 4A in relation to COVID-19, asking the Palm Springs City Council to support, you know, continuous federal-state effort for mortgage and rent relief, but also ask if the city could do a local-level rent or mortgage relief program. I had emailed you all what we're proposing. Currently, we have Pomona, City of Paris, that created a local-level commercial residential rent relief and mortgage relief program. And so I'm hoping that Palm Springs can do the same to help with the residents. We know that there's some efforts happening at the federal and state, people that aren't documented, not everyone's going to qualify for all these different programs, and so if the city could help, I would really, really appreciate it. And yeah, so, and then, so, some of the things that we've seen in Palm Springs or the City of Paris, that they use new community development block grants, they've used emergency solution grants, and other low-income housing funds in regards to this mortgage and rent relief program. So there's a lot of ideas up there that hope that Palm Springs with the new funding that they're getting, and just any current funding if you have any, to help with some of our tenant, small businesses and residential tenants that need that extra help, so that we're all thriving here in the midst of this epidemic. So thank you for your time, and look forward to hearing some of the discussions on COVID-19, on item 4A. Thank you so much.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect.
Hello. Time to turn it down. I'll be ready.
Julie, you have two minutes, and you're live with the City Council.
Good evening. My name is Julie Aaron, I'm a resident of Palm Springs. I definitely appreciate the hard work, I don't envy the job you have on council there, and staff as well, to create guidelines to help our community phase back into activities and practices, knowing fully well that it'll be a while before it'll be business as usual. As an avid tennis and pickleball player, I have been following both the county and the, you know, other cities of the valley, the rulings and the way that they're bringing things back to reinstate play, and in fact, I have been actively plying for the last two weeks in Cathedral City. There's a couple of restrictions that I'd suggest you reconsider from the proposed plans, as I believe they only, one being allowing singles play only, and the wearing of face masks at all times, the way that it has, I've actually just saw that La Quinta has now opened up to doubles play in terms of being realistic. And as far as face masks, the first week, we were all wearing them, and it became evident that the safety factor was about when we were passing each other in corridors and small areas, but on the tennis court, having, it's not really actually very safe to be wearing a mask, not realistic. And, let's see, the key factors as a tennis player going out there and taking this virus extremely seriously is that you stay home if you're under the weather, always washing your hands before the play and after the play. We will be exchanging the same balls, that's just the way the game is played, but to then be washing our hands after. So I just don't like the idea of setting up rules that will be near impossible to police and don't make sense to begin with. So I hope that you take these ideas into consideration and trust that after months of staying at home, we appreciate the seriousness. Thank you.
Hello, Carol Laduka.
Yes.
This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight. The reason I'm speaking is because the pool guideline's in place. One swimmer per pool does not work in my complex because there's no way to monitor the guidelines. So my pool remains closed. Riverside County released new community pool guidelines that need to be adopted. Last night, when I heard about them, I was pleased. Today, I am depressed because I can still not use the pool. In an official statement from the CDC, it says pools are safe. Number one, there's no evidence that the virus spreads in water, swimming is not a contact sport. Number three, it's safer than most activities, and the pools we're talking about are all outdoor. Again, the CDC again says pools are safe. Pools need to be, the isolation thing inside is not healthy physically or mentally. Evidence growing is growing that you are safer outside than indoors. Isolation, for those of us who live alone, is very difficult. At night after dark, I look out and I see no lights and few cars. I see a sparkling pool, though, I cannot go in. I don't think people understand isolation because until you live it, you don't know what it's like. I don't go to a job, I don't have family in California anymore because they all left because of high taxes. I live alone, and I'm a senior. I'm an active senior who likes to swim, and one of the reasons I was, I retired here was being able to swim all year. I need you, Mr. Mayor and members, to finally open the pools to help end the isolation. I don't need you to keep me safe from going in a pool. To me, when people want me to be safe, that means controlling me, and I don't want that. Thank you.
Mr. Epperson.
Yes, sir.
This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
I've changed my mind, I don't think I want to do it, so.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not much of a speaker, so I don't know what to say.
That's fine, we can disconnect if you'd like.
Okay, thank you.
Hello, this is Debbie.
Hi, Debbie. Mayor Gas, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Coors and members of the City Council. Thank you for your time and consideration. My name is Debbie Barajas, and I live in Ascena for the past five years, and usually play golf there two to three times per week. The Ascena Golf Course is annually ranked as one of the best courses in the Coachella Valley and the top-rated course in Palm Springs. They have worked relentlessly during the shutdown to keep the course in top-notch shape. It'll be a shame to let this course remain closed any longer or potentially close down permanently as a result of economic distress. Since Riverside lifted the restriction on golf courses, my roommate and I have played four rounds of golf at different nearby courses. All of the courses we played operated in accordance with Park and Play Guidance, and there were no issues with cleanliness or social distancing. Over the past six weeks, residents of Ascena, me included, have used our closed golf course as our personal hiking trail. The backyard where I live is about six feet from the car path on the course. Of the hundreds of people passing by daily, I'd say a ratio of those wearing versus not wearing masks was about 50 to 50. Those who chose not to wear a mask may have had an underlying health issue such as I do, or they may have been walking with a roommate, partner, spouse, or other family member, or just felt no need to wear a mask in a wide-open space. At no time did we feel that these walkers were endangering our personal safe space. Many times I wondered what would be any different if they were walking in this same space with a golf club in their hand. I honestly feel more anxiety when I go to the grocery store or pharmacy. I do wear my mask when I enter any facility or cannot maintain social distancing. Otherwise, I use common sense and keep my mask within reach should I need it. Asking anyone to wear a mask constantly while exerting themselves could lead to other medical emergencies such as an asthma attack. I speak from experience. Having said that, I am more than willing to expose myself to a certain amount of risk knowing that I am taking appropriate measures to minimize the risk and not put others at risk either. In closing, I cannot think of a better way to gradually open our economy back up than to allow an activity that is not only safe, but according to new information is actually beneficial to one's health as a result of exposure to the UV light from the sun. Thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to speak tonight. Please vote in favor of opening all of our city golf courses. Thank you very much.
John Fitzpatrick.
Yes.
This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council.
Hello, Anthony.
You have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, council members and staff, I represent Ascena Golf Club, and I'd like to address the golf issue, item 4A. First, I'd like to thank council members Garner and Middleton for their efforts on this matter since the last meeting. I also concur with the other callers about the flagstick issue. To say that I'm disappointed that golf in Palm Springs has not reopened alongside all the other golf courses in the valley and county would be an understatement. The city's decision to keep golf Uh, the city's decision to keep golf closed has unnecessarily compounded our losses, kept many people unemployed, and prevented our community at large from enjoying what is widely accepted by medical and public health experts as an abundantly safe activity. Now, without going into the reasons why golf is safe, consider that as of today, all 50 states have deemed golf safe to reopen and 95% of all golf courses in the United States are projected to be open by the end of next week. After working with the committee to satisfy all their concerns, there remains one item that needs to be dismissed, which is to limit golf at non-municipal public golf courses in Palm Springs to only full or part-time residents. This would mean financial devastation, financial devastation for us. Only 5.2% of our customers are residents of Palm Springs. No business is sustainable with a forced moratorium on 95% of its customers. And no other, no other business, uh, for-profit business in the city is subject to this residency condition. What if all the restaurants in your intro video, uh, the year intro video is designed to support, were disqualified from serving visitors? People can freely drive into Palm Springs to go to the market, service their car, and purchase recreational narcotics. Golfers in Palm Springs can leave to go play golf and return home. How do you enforce an order like this? Is this the best use of city's resources? I tell you, the economic destruction this will cause for us is not something any of us should come close to allowing to happen. And I can just see tomorrow's headline. A city built on tourism and hospitality doesn't want people from other cities coming in to play golf. Regardless of your intent, which I very much respect your efforts to, to keep us safe and, and I understand the decisions you have, you have to make.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Just with the, the perception, yes.
Your, your time is over.
Okay, well, thank you. We submitted our plan. We're prepared to open and I thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. We'll disconnect now. Lisa Jacobs?
Yeah.
This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting and you're live with the council and have two minutes to provide your comments.
Hi, um, good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. Uh, my name is Lisa Jacobs. I'm actually a resident of Los Angeles, but I'm calling regarding the Palm Springs Cemetery District, um, which directly affects many of your constituents. Um, the reason I'm calling is they have a very restrictive policy right now. Uh, my mother died, who was a resident of Palm Desert. She died last week and she was buried at Desert Memorial Park, which is part of the Palm Springs Cemetery District. Um, we had to choose her plot sight unseen because we weren't allowed to go in. She was buried alone. We weren't allowed to go to the cemetery. Uh, my parents were married for 60 years and this has been extremely devastating on my father. Now, we understood at the time that there were COVID-19 restrictions, but at the time, as of last week, we were told that, um, normal services and visitations would resume as of May 15th. Apparently, all of a sudden, it has changed to June 19th. This doesn't seem consistent with federal policy, state policy, the policy of Riverside County. Um, in fact, Coachella, Coachella Valley Public Cemetery is allowing funeral services with up to 10 people and their grounds are open all day. All we're really looking for is for him to be allowed to, with a mask on, go and visit the grave of his wife who he was married to for 60 years. We can't seem to get a good explanation as to why that can't happen. We've contacted Congressman Ruiz, State Assembly Member Garcia, Supervisor Perez. Um, we just feel something needs to be done, especially with the policy now of reopening. Um, anything that can be done to change this policy would be greatly appreciated. Thank you very much.
I'm sorry for your loss and I will disconnect now.
Thank you.
Hello? Jim Seavy?
Speaking.
Uh, if you're watching the meeting live, if you could reduce the volume, uh, but you are live with the city council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. My name is Jim Seavy. I live in Palm Springs. I'm an avid pickleball player, golfer, and softball player. There is no solution to a pandemic. It is what it is. From my perspective, the playing of sporting events during a time when everyone involved is subject to being infected by someone who does not even know that she or he is contagious is sufficient reason for no events of any in such nature to be scheduled. I'm amazed that anyone would be willing to make the trade-off of a possible death sentence associated with interaction with others who have no idea of their COVID-19 status simply because there is no testing being done. But even if there were testing being done, the test is about the past interactions the person has had. It cannot foretell the future and if the person has been exposed and is not a carrier after the test has been done. Testing must be ongoing. Given the lack of leadership at the national level on this issue, testing is not going to be improved in the immediate future. The fact that I must speak on the phone rather than speak in person at the city council meeting this evening says a lot about why reopening facilities should not be done. I understand that businesses like golf courses are losing money. Before my retirement, my wife and I operated a consulting firm. Being in business requires taking risks. Sometimes unforeseen, unforeseen things happen and sometimes one encounters unforeseen and unintended consequences. And there are calculated risks that are sometimes an organization will choose to take. The type of risk is irrelevant. Anyone who operates a business has chosen to take risks. There are no guarantees. Please do not let the few people who care more about their bottom line profitability than the lives of their fellow man pressure you into changing policies that you are, excuse me, that you are well founded to protect the very constituents that you serve. It is not your responsibility to familiarize the risks the business is required to take in order to operate. It is your responsibility to protect your constituents from their fellow man who have an agenda that puts your constituents' lives in peril. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
This is April.
Uh, I'm, I, am I speaking to Lisa Cox?
Uh, you're speaking to April Cox.
Uh, did you want to speak at the city council meeting tonight?
Uh, am, am I on the phone for the city?
Yes.
For the city council meeting?
Yes.
Uh, yeah, 'cause, well, I had a concern earlier today because I've been looking for masks and stuff like that and, um, they're not exactly easy to find right now, but I ended up solving my own problem. And I know if I'm having a problem with it, I'm sure tons of other business owners are also having a problem with it as well. But, um, I ended up resolving my own issues today.
Okay. We'll, we'll disconnect then. Thank you.
Please enjoy this.
For masks and stuff like that.
Ms. Tarina?
Yes.
Hi, this is Anthony calling from the city council meeting. If you could reduce the volume of the TV and, uh, you're live with the council and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Thank you. Mayor Corz and council members, my name is Elan Tarina and I live at Ascena. I won't take much of your time as I sent each of you an email with my support for opening our golf courses, but I wanted to reiterate that support in person, such as it is, for myself and my neighbors. I appreciate your strict and early actions to protect our wonderful city at the beginning of this crisis, and I know that opening Palm Springs back up needs to take place in stages. With that said, even as a non-golfer, I firmly believe that golf courses should be considered one of the safest places to start. Golf is a non-contact sport and the game is played in a wide open space. Social distancing is already built into the game, so golfers pose no public health risk to themselves or anyone else. And with even further adjustments that I have heard other area courses have made, such as with the pins, sand trap breaks, and cart usage, it can be even safer than before. I urge you to vote to reopen our city's public courses as soon as possible, not only because I believe the time has come, but also to stop the flow of greens fees out of Palm Springs to the other courses that have opened in the valley. That was my written comment, but I, just a short rebuttal to a caller that just called in. It's not just the business, uh, uh, loss for the golf course, but there are many, many hundreds of homes that are on these golf courses. And if those businesses go under, so do all of our neighborhoods. Thank you for listening to me and I look forward to your vote this evening.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
Hello?
Robert Brugman?
Hello?
Hello, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the council and you have, uh, two minutes to provide your comments.
Well, thank you, Anthony. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I know you're gonna be shocked, but I'm not talking about pickleball or golf. I'm to comment about Item 2A, which is the Orchid Inn, moving forward. Uh, I urge you.
Mr. Brugman?
I.
If you wouldn't mind?
Yes.
We'll call you when that item comes up. I thought this was for Item 4A.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm not gonna be available later. I just want to urge them to adopt the, uh, staff report with the denial of the, um, variance for the, uh, two, uh, setbacks. So, uh, I urge them to adopt the, uh, the current staff report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
Bye.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comment.
Okay. Uh, thank you. The next item is city council and city manager comments and reports. City manager, do you have anything?
Uh, Mayor, don't have a specific report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, council members? Um, Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this will be brief. Uh, one of the truly important, uh, institutions in Palm Springs is our farmer's market. And, uh, the summer farmer's market, uh, that is generally held in the pavilion is facing, uh, a very severe financial shortfall to be able to operate. Uh, they have, uh, developed a GoFundMe page, uh, under Save the Palm Springs Summer Farmer's Market. It's approximately $10,000, uh, that they're trying to, uh, to raise, and I want to encourage people, uh, who care about farmer's markets to, uh, to support this very good cause. If anyone needs, uh, the specific link, you can e-mail me at my city address, lisa.milton@palmspringsca.gov, and I will be happy to forward the link to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments or reports? Your first and last.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just have a few items. So, Councilmember Garner and I are working on the city's census, um, complete count committee, and so, thank you to all of our community members who are serving on that committee with us. Um, we had a meeting, we're continuing our census work. Um, the number for the number of residents in Palm Springs who've completed the census are still quite low. Um, many of the cities in the Coachella Valley are beating us. Um, so we're looking at, um, you know, increasing, uh, the census responses among our residents. We're doing that by, um, Spanish radio ads, um, other kind of outreach on social media and other formats. And so, for anyone who, who's listening, if, if you have your census, if you got, um, nailed it at home, or if you didn't, you can go online, um, and complete your census. I did it and it took me five minutes. Um, so it's really, really important to ensure that we get federal funding and all the funding that we deserve for our community, um, especially now, we really are gonna need every single dollar and every single resident, um, to complete their census form. The government, the federal government is reducing their, um, ability, you know, they're no longer able to go door to door this summer like they were planning to really in, in complete people's census for them. So we need everyone's help checking to make sure everyone you know, uh, completed your census. Councilmember Garner, did you have anything to add from our meeting?
No, I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, just a few other updates. Um, I serve for, for the city on the CBAG, the Coachella Valley Association of Government Public Safety Committee. Um, that meet, meeting is happening this coming Monday, um, May 11th, 9:00 AM on Zoom or by phone. So for any resident who wants to participate in that or listen in, um, you can do so. I'm also holding, um, thanks to the mayor's suggestion, a neighborhood meeting for the representatives from 1PS and the alternate. So, um, that's happening on May 14th. Uh, I've invited all of their representatives and alternates. Um, that's as many as people as we can initially handle, I think, on Zoom, um, but I am hoping after that meeting, um, to open it up and have a bigger town hall for all of District 4. Um, we'll figure out technologically how to do that online. Um, but just so you know, so the 1PS reps will be having a meeting and then share that information with their neighborhoods and HOAs. Um, last, uh, on May 20th, um, I, you know, I chair the CBAG, the Association of Governments Homeless Committee. We have an upcoming meeting for May, on May 20th at 10:00 AM. I believe that will be on Zoom as well. So anyone who's interested in the county's efforts on homelessness, um, can listen in to that meeting and learn what we're doing. Um, I had asked at the last council meeting for us to get a report from county staff or from CBAG staff about, um, the county's efforts on homelessness. The county really has been leading, um, on homelessness right now during their crisis. One, because the county has the legal responsibility, uh, to handle homelessness for our region and they get funding to do so, and they're receiving a large amount of funding from the federal government to house people who are homeless during this crisis. Um, so I had asked that that be included as a report, um, as a presentation for the next meeting. So I'm asking if we could definitely have that. We've been getting a lot of questions from the community about homelessness and what services there are. So if we could invite Greg Rodriguez or someone from CBAG to give that presentation at the next meeting, I think that would be helpful. Um, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Great. Um, thank you. Anyone else? Um, okay, so I have a few things I will share. Um, one is, uh, a lot of people may have read about the state, um, using federal funds to have a restaurant delivery program, um, for seniors who meet eligibility requirements. Uh, at the Riverside County Department on Aging, uh, restaurants can register who want to be part of that program and seniors can, um, check if they're eligible and then get, um, entered into it. Uh, it has taken the county a little while to get it up and running and all the information they need from the state. Um, the first restaurant in Coachella Valley was approved yesterday, but I did hear from restaurants in Palm Springs that were approved today. So, I spoke to Supervisor Perez's, um, staff, Greg Rodriguez, today, who said that should be moving pretty rapidly now. So, one, if you're a restaurant and you haven't, uh, applied and you want to do this program, uh, will they be providing the funds to cover the cost of the, um, meals? Um, please do so, and if you're over 65, uh, please register for that program and we should make sure we're getting that information out to Mizel and, and others. I know our, um, Economic Development Director has already done some outreach on that. The days all blur right now, but I think earlier this week, um, I did a FaceTime, a Facebook Live with Supervisor Perez and Desert Hot Springs Mayor Scott Mattis. We had a really good discussion related to both, um, the economic impacts of COVID-19 and different opportunities, but also some of the testing information both Desert Hot Springs and Palm Springs feel we need. For example, we don't have the breakdown of who has tested positive in our cities. So we don't know if all the cases are tied to closed living facilities and it would help us prepare and advise our residents if we had that information, um, which Supervisor said he's gonna work to get. And also asked for information from the county, not just the day they release test results, but the day the test was taken, because that'll help us see the trend lines better to see how cases are going, because it's the time the person is actually positive with the virus. Um, and given the different testing results, it used to be a lot, much longer, now it's shorter, it would be helpful to have that information. So the supervisor is working on that as well. Um, on Tuesday, there was a webinar with the Palm Springs Chamber of Commerce and the Small Business Development Center and some other organizations. I was on it as long. We're continuing to provide a lot of information there for residents, for businesses, for workers. So please use that as a tool. Last week, there was a briefing from Supervisor Perez for Coachella Valley Mayor and City Managers regarding some of the county's new proposals, when they were thinking about restricting, lifting their orders. There is another one tomorrow in the afternoon briefing. The Board of Supervisors will be meeting at 1:00 to potentially make decisions on that after a 10-hour meeting they had on Monday. They know what our meetings can be like sometimes now, and a lot of public comment. I did have the opportunity to speak, and I really did urge them, one, to continue their role of providing city, school districts, other agencies in Riverside County with public health information and interpretation of state guidance for COVID-19. No other entity has a public health department in our county. The county is funded for it, the county is the one who provides that. And Dr. Kaiser came to our last meeting, Supervisor Perez's staff, especially Greg Rodriguez, and answered all of our questions. County councils worked with our city attorney to come up with rules when the state wasn't being specific. And it's a really important function that we need. The other thing I ask is that they please not retract the rules about face coverings and physical distancing when people are in a business, which they were considering doing and just making a recommendation. There are workers in many businesses, grocery stores in particular, and pharmacies, that can come into contact much closer than six feet with hundreds of different people a day. And they need a requirement that they're being protected, not just a recommendation. It's not fair to them to put them in harm's way when people can wear a face covering when they go into a store. It's also important for our economy, this discussion that it's either economic reopening or public health precautions, and they're one against the other is simply not accurate, and it's a false narrative. If we have face coverings and physical distancing when people go into stores, people are more likely to go to those stores and spend money. And so that was really the focus of my comments. I just want to share it with the rest of council and the public. They are still considering what they're going to do on that, whether they're just going to do the minimum that the state is allowing for counties that have no cases, or if they're going to have additional precautions. Because until the county can show that we've reached certain metrics, and the governor's now given very specifics, we won't be able to move into the second part of Phase 2, which includes restaurants being able to have people in person. So it's important that we do this for the economy, and I've made that case. And the supervisor has actually said he wants to rescind his request to rescind those. So we'll see how that goes tomorrow, and if they make a decision, we'll make sure to report out to the public. So that's all I have. Does anyone else have anything else? Councilmember Garner?
Just since you're talking about it, Mayor, I do want to say that we are going to talk a little bit more about things related to COVID later on in the agenda. So for those of you who are interested in getting more clarity on things, especially swimming pools, et cetera, please watch at that time. It's one of the last things that we're discussing. But we don't have a big agenda, so hopefully it won't take too long to, when we get there. Because I know that a lot of you are watching for that reason. So we will-
Thank you for that reminder. And the two public hearings that we're doing first, we actually didn't get to last time, so we wanted to make sure we did, but we will get to the COVID-19. And I did forget one other thing. Councilmember Middleton and I, who are the budget liaisons, have several meetings with staff on the very significant impacts to the city budget. Staff is working around the clock, they're working all weekend, preparing for a meeting we're going to have Monday night. I want to make sure people are aware of that. Monday night, we're having a special meeting just on the budget and the financial implications for the city at 6:00 p.m. So really want to encourage people to participate if they want to weigh in, but also to watch that, hear what we're in, because we want to hear from you. You know, budgets are priorities, and with reduced revenue, we're going to have to make some very hard decisions. And what our public wants and what our residents and businesses want is very important to all of us in making our decisions. So please put that on your calendars. And with that, we will go on to our next item-
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I missed one public comment. If we could open that back up?
Yes, let's reopen public comments. Thank you.
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Egan?
Yes.
Yes, you're live with the city council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments. Thank you.
Pardon me?
And you can begin. You have two minutes.
Two minutes?
Yes.
Dear Mayor and Councilmembers, I deeply appreciate your taking the two weeks to come up with a safe plan for opening the Takwitz Golf Course, the Resort Course, and the Legend Course. Yesterday, Los Alamos announced that the COVID-19 has mutated to a version that is far more contagious than the Wuhan version. Again, there are 200 residents around the Legend Course at the Takwitz Golf Club. At least 70% of the residents are seniors who have underlying health concerns and make them vulnerable to COVID. Councilperson Middleton assured us that she will be in touch with the manager of the Takwitz Golf Course so they do not trespass onto our property. The management has never protected us in the past, and they don't have the personnel to protect us now. How will they enforce that golfers wear their mask when they're hundreds of yards away from the golf club? They already don't require the workers to wear them. One drove by this afternoon not wearing a mask on his lawnmower. Who will make sure everyone who is local, under 65, and if not, fine them? I appreciate the work that's been done to create these rules, but our local police won't be around to hand out tickets to these people who don't wear masks or who possibly expose us by trespassing our property. The management has historically only focused on keeping the golfers happy, not keeping the residents safe. There is no motivation for the manager of the course to protect, to report to the city that the golfers are not following the rules. Again, over 200 residents surround the Legend Course while the Resort Course runs along the wash and has absolutely no exposure to residents' homes. For the next month, I implore you to keep the Legend Course closed and protect the residents, and only open the Resort Course to keep the golfers happy. As you know, the number of cases in Riverside County has doubled in the last 20 days. Please protect our neighbors so that we don't become part of those statistics and the spread of the virus. Thank you for consideration, and thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect. Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comment. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is the consent calendar. I will entertain a motion to accept the consent calendar. Without the following items removed for separate discussions, items A and, 1A and 1F, and noting the refusal of Councilmember Middleton on item 1.
I motion?
Motion by Councilmember Garner?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Woods.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chors? I'm sorry, Mayor Protem Holstich?
Yes.
And Mayor Chors?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Great. Thank you. So we will move to consent calendar, item 1A. Do we get a staff report, please? Although I'm not sure there is one. It's approved the city council minutes of April 2nd and April 14, 2020. So if okay, I'll move to Mayor Protem Holstich.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just pulled it quickly. I wanted to highlight something. So I saw that the mayor had requested that staff develop a one-page notice that tenants can provide landlords regarding the city's orders. And I just wanted to bump that for staff and make sure that we do that. I'm getting a number of requests for help and information, because I've seen that three-day notices have started to go out to tenants, even though our ordinance moratorium on three-day notices and evictions prohibits those actions, or landlords seeking to evict tenants during this time. So I just wanted to make sure that we're notifying tenants and that we have simple forms. I think the state has simple forms that they provided or that people are using. So I'd be happy to work with staff on coming up with a sample form that we can put on our website to notify tenants and for people to request rental deferment if they, if they, the moratorium applies to them. Thank you.
Great. Anything else on that? Okay, do we have a motion on item 1A?
I motion.
Motion, Councilmember Garner, I think second by Councilmember Woods?
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Holstich?
Yes.
Mayor Chors?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Great. The second item that was pulled was item 1F. Receive and file agreement with the State of California Business, Consumer Services, and Housing Agency for $10 million in homeless housing assistance and prevention program grant funds. Mayor Protem Holstich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just pulled this for the public to notify everyone that we have applied for the $10 million from the State of California. And what this does is accept and file an agreement that we've now entered into with the State of California for that $10 million. So we have not amassed all the time why we haven't solved homelessness yet. We haven't received the money from the state. So we're still working on that, and hopefully this will move that forward, and we can receive the funds and start to use them in the way that the city council directed at our public meeting.
Great, thank you. Anyone else? It's nice to have good news and see money coming in. So do we have a motion?
Definitely motion.
Motion by Councilmember Woods?
Second.
Second by Mayor Protem Holstich?
Mayor Protem, I'm sorry. Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Holstich?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner?
Yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Mayor Chors?
Yes.
Motion passes 5 to 0.
Great. Okay, the next item is item 2A. Consideration of a city council call-up of the Planning Commission's decision regarding the orchardry project by New Church 11 involving a general plan amendment, variance, major architectural application, and conditional use permit for the operation of a hotel with accessory spa, restaurant, and meeting space located at 222 South Coia Road. Staff report, please.
Have consideration of a case for redevelopment of the Orchid Tree Inn property. The applications were considered by the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission recommended denial of three of the four applications, and so that is why this item is before you this evening. If I could have the PowerPoint, please. Let me just briefly talk about the four applications that are before you. The first is a request for a major architectural application, which is relative to the new development on the site. Secondly, there is a conditional use permit, which would allow a restaurant and a spa use as part of the hotel. Third, there is a general plan amendment request to reclassify the designation for Arenas Road. I'll go into that a little bit later in the presentation. And then the fourth application is a request for a variance to reduce setbacks for two buildings, one on Bolardo Road and one on Baristo Road. In terms of the application, there was an approval back in 2016 for a redevelopment of the site. The area at that time was 3.1 acres. It incorporated about 3/4 of the block on which the community church and the bungalows sit. The applicant is requesting to submit a new site plan, which will incorporate three parcels on the north end of the block. This expands the development site to a total of 3.65 acres, again, the entire block now, and would include 74 guest rooms, a restaurant, spa, and meeting or event space for the hotel facility. In terms of the proposal, the reuse of the community church will still continue. This is where the restaurant, spa, and meeting space facilities will be located. The applicant will also renovate the eight bungalows that sit at the southeast corner of the site, adding a new swimming pool, cabana, and landscaping there. And then also involves, on the remainder of the site, the removal of the existing structures and the construction of new one- and two-story hotel buildings. In the image that is on the PowerPoint screen, the blue indicates the historic community church, the footprint of the church, and the bungalow court, the eight bungalows. The remaining structures, again, as you can see there, will be removed and replaced. These are 3D renderings of the site, showing the massing and the height of the buildings. Again, the new structures will be one and two stories in height. The Historic Site Preservation Board reviewed this application request due to the fact that the community church and bungalow court are Class I historic structures. They issued a certificate of appropriateness for the project with a number of conditions which we have included in the conditions of approval for this project under condition number PLN 3. The Historic Site Preservation Board had a question about the building at 239 West Arenas in terms of its demolition and removal from the site. They requested that further study be done to determine if there was any historic value to that building. Staff has contracted with one of our on-call consultants to conduct that study, and will be able to report on that to our Historic Site Preservation Board in the next month or two. The Planning Commission then reviewed the application at their March 11th and March 25th meetings. In reviewing the applications, they recommended approval of the general plan amendment, finding that the criteria had been met, but they had issues in recommending approval of the other applications. Their issues were as follows. Number one, they were concerned about the number of parking spaces provided. The site plan that they reviewed at that time had a total of 87 onsite parking spaces. The Planning Commission was concerned that that was insufficient for the scope of uses being proposed for the site. They could not make the findings for the variance for the two structures on Bolardo and Baristo Road. They also had a concern about the placement and configuration of Building N, which is one of the buildings that requires the variance. And then finally, they had concerns about the streetscape and perimeter wall. They didn't have renderings of the Coia Road frontage or the Arenas Road frontage, and based on that, they were not able to make a determination that the landscaping and the configuration was in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood. So again, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the general plan amendment, but could not make the findings for the other three applications. Let me go through the individual applications and discuss some of those issues with you. Starting with the general plan amendment, the applicant is requesting to reclassify Arenas Road from a four-lane secondary thoroughfare to a two-lane collector. Staff has reviewed this request, finds that it is consistent with the current use of Arenas Road, and we are recommending approval of the general plan amendment. This will allow the applicant to have bay parking on the Arenas Road frontage, which helps them in complying with parking requirements. In terms of the next issue is parking. Under our code, the parking that would be required is 62 spaces for the hotel units, 26 spaces for the restaurant, six spaces for the spa, and for their meeting and event space, a total of 67 spaces would be required for that particular use. As I had mentioned under the original proposal, 87 spaces were proposed. The applicant has since amended their site plan, and they now have a total of 94 onsite parking spaces, which will meet the requirements for the hotel, restaurant, and spa uses. So for those uses, they would be in compliance with the onsite parking that's required. One of the things that the Planning Commission recommended was that the applicant use off-site parking in the amount of approximately 25 to 30 spaces to handle the overflow that would occur from meetings and events. Under the city's zoning code, Class I historic buildings are allowed an exemption from the provision of additional parking spaces. I just want you to be aware, the applicant is requesting that you approve the 94 onsite parking spaces that they're showing on their site plan, and they will discuss the issue of off-site parking with you as part of their presentation. In terms of the variance, the applicant is requesting reductions in setbacks along the Baristo Road frontage and the Bolardo Road frontage. They have a cabana structure on the Baristo Road frontage where a 20-foot setback is required. They're requesting an 11-foot setback. And then for a two-story building on Bolardo, a 25-foot setback is required, and they are proposing an 11-foot setback. In terms of the findings that need to be made for approving a variance, you as the city council would need to find the following. That number one, there are unique characteristics of the property, such as its shape, its topography, or something that is unique about the property itself. Also, it shall not constitute a grant of special privilege that is not available to other property owners. It shall not be materially detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare. required, and they are proposing an 11-foot setback. In terms of the findings that need to be made for approving a variance, you as the city council would need to find the following: that number one, there are unique characteristics of the property, such as its shape, its topography, or something that is unique about the property itself. Also, it shall not constitute a grant of special privilege that is not available to other property owners. It shall not be materially detrimental to public health, safety, and welfare, and needs to be consistent with the general plan. Going into further detail, the variances that are being requested, this is the cabana structure that will be constructed adjacent to the bungalow court. They are requesting an 11-foot setback where 20 feet is required. You can see in the PowerPoint the area of the setback that is being requested. On the Bolardo Road frontage, there is a two-story hotel building, where they are requesting an 11-foot setback where a 25-foot setback is required. This, again, poses an issue in terms of being able to meet the findings for a variance. The applicant has submitted a letter, which is on pages 107 and 108 in your backup materials, identifying why they are unable to provide a greater setback for this particular building relative to the pool area and their needs for the hotel guests. So I would just point out to you that they do have some justification for that, which is included in your backup and is available for you to review. In terms of the streetscape, where the planning commission had concerns, they were concerned that with the setback reduction for Building N, it was not harmoniously integrated with the other buildings along Bolardo Road. They were also concerned that they didn't have enough information on the wall design and the streetscape along the Kewea and Arenas frontages, and concerned that the wall around the perimeter of the property might create a fortress appearance, something that they didn't feel was appropriate for that particular neighborhood. The applicant has submitted additional renderings, which are included in your packet. These are renderings that were not available for the planning commission to review. Here, the applicant is showing their primary entrance point on the Kewea Road frontage. This will be their valet drop-off point and check-in point for the hotel. They're also providing renderings showing the corner of Arenas and Kewea right here, showing the landscape materials, the wall there at the perimeter of the property. And then finally, another view of the streetscape and the wall at the corner of Arenas and Bolardo. So in terms of the issues before you this evening, I've identified them as follows. Number one, with the general plan amendment, just as the planning commission found, staff would recommend that that be approved as submitted. We find that to be consistent with the use and the context, and therefore would recommend approval. On the parking, staff would recommend the following: that we approve the project with the 94 spaces onsite. Planning commission recommended an additional 25 to 30 offsite spaces. I will remind you, however, that as a Class 1 historic structure, that being the community church and bungalows, city council has the discretion to look at the parking that is provided and make a determination that the onsite parking is adequate. Relative to the streetscape concerns and the perimeter wall, what I would recommend to you is that we approve the project as submitted, however, that the Architectural Advisory Committee review the final streetscape and wall and gate details, just to make sure it's consistent with the context of the neighborhood and that we don't have a fortress-like appearance. Finally, on the variance, for the cabana structure on Baristo Road, I believe that the findings could be made, that because of its location relative to historic structures, this is a unique condition, the fact that the structure is non-habitable, is open on four sides, may warrant approval of the setback as the applicant has proposed. However, there is still an issue with Building N requesting a setback of 11 feet. I feel that it does not match the context, and that additional setback would be appropriate in helping the building to blend in with the rest of the streetscape. So those are the four issues that are before you this evening that warrant your input and discussion. One of the last things that I want to mention is that you reviewed the operations covenant for the hotel property back in November of 2019, and you established a performance schedule. I just wanted to share with you what this means in terms of your consideration of this entitlement and the opening of the project. If you were to approve the applications this evening, the applicant would then be required, under the performance schedule, to submit a complete building permit application package by January the 7th of 2021. The building permit would then need to be issued by May 7th of 2021, with start of construction by August 7th of 2021. The hotel would need to be substantially complete by November 7th of 2022, and then the opening of the hotel would need to occur by January 7th of 2023. And so again, if this project is approved, this is the performance schedule that would be in place, and the applicant would be required to adhere to that schedule. That concludes my presentation to you this evening. Happy to answer any questions that you might have. And then the applicant as well will have a presentation, and will speak to some of the issues which I have mentioned. Thank you.
Thank you very much for the thorough staff report and the presentation. Are there any questions for staff before we open the public hearing? Seeing, oh, Councilmember Middleton. You're muted, Councilmember.
Thank you. Flynn, could we take a look at Building N?
Maybe Councilmember Middleton, if you could go ahead with your question and...
Okay. I would, I'd like to get your take on Building N. The setback that the applicant has proposed is 11 feet. You're proposing, as I understand, at 15 to 20 feet. What would be the impact of going out to 15 to 20 feet on the rest of the property?
Would be that the pool area, which is immediately to the west of Building N, would be further restricted in terms of the width of the pool and the areas for the lounge on both sides of the pool. Again, the applicant has provided a letter talking to that issue, and so that is their primary concern, is that would constrict the public space on the interior of the site.
And how, how large is that space right now?
I don't have a scale drawing in front of me. I wouldn't be able to tell you. Perhaps the applicant can answer that question.
Okay. I'm trying to get a sense of what the extent of the intrusion is for the type of environment they're trying to create around the pool area. That's my question, and I'll save it then for the applicant.
Any other questions for staff? Okay. Councilmember Woods?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Flynn, the, the extra parking that the planning commission asked for, was that supposed to be parking just for special events, that they would use just for that purpose and only needed at that point?
That is correct. Based on the updated parking plan, which the applicant has submitted to us, they have sufficient parking for the hotel use, the spa use, and the restaurant use. It's only the meeting space that really is not covered by the onsite parking. And so that was the concern of the planning commission, is having some overflow parking available for the special events that would only be periodic and would not be a daily occurrence.
Thanks. And on the, we, I think you used the word fortress on, on some of the roads that are surrounding the, the project. And you had made a recommendation that it might go back to the AAC for review and for review. Do you see that as being articulated, where possibly we could change the setbacks at different points to give it more of an articulation? Or what do you think the AAC might do with the applicant?
All of things that I think that they might look at. As you mentioned, articulation of the exterior wall is something that would be important, so it is offset periodically. I think they could also look at the pedestrian gates that they have scattered around the perimeter of the property, giving them greater offset, maybe a little bit of transparency so that there's safety for pedestrians. Also looking at the streetscape materials themselves in terms of the plantings between the sidewalk and the curb, shading of the sidewalk, et cetera. So those are the things that I think the AAC would need to look at in detail in terms of correcting the appearance of the exterior wall.
Great. And going back to parking in a moment. If they were to secure some offsite parking for the meeting rooms, it says my internet is unstable.
It is.
Partially, I'm sorry. So what I was asking is, how would we manage that to know when they have meetings? Do they need to get a special permit, or how would that work?
I'd recommend, if you were to approve the offsite parking, that we have them submit a parking management plan, which would be reviewed and approved by myself, which would talk about their valet operations in terms of how they move vehicles back and forth between their valet drop-off and the offsite parking lot, the hours of operation of the offsite parking lot, et cetera. So it would be done through a parking management plan that we would review and approve at a staff level.
Great, thank you. That's all for now, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thanks. Anyone else? Okay. So at this time, I'd like to open the public hearing. The appellant will have up to five minutes to present their case. If requested, the applicant will have two additional minutes at the end for rebuttal. The public is invited to speak on the public hearing for up to two minutes. So the public hearing is open, and is the applicant available?
Mr. Weintraub, this is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You are live.
Oh, hey, Anthony.
Yes, you're live with the city council, and they're ready for your public testimony, or your comments as an applicant.
Okay, excellent. Thank you. Just pulling my notes up here. First, I want to thank Flynn for his really excellent presentation tonight. I think he captured everything that has been said and, and what our hopes and concerns are for the project. I also want to thank David Newell, who's done a tremendous job as well, putting everything together up to date, and for all of his work and for the rest of planning staff. The city has a really wonderful planning department, and they should be very proud of it. Getting to the project, I believe the council members have received the sort of deck that lays out even further what we're trying to create here. I've heard from, at the planning commission, we don't fully understand, or some of them weren't familiar with the Obergeiss brand, and so we don't have to get into that. But Obergeiss is a huge economic driver into every community. I think even the Chamber of Commerce has said that they are a major aspirational brand that brings up all the other brands around them and does not provide competition because they're sort of in their own league and class of a five-star brand. But putting that aside, really, the only two concerns that we have tonight, and they are really operator and financing-driven, are the variance or setback along Bolardo, as well as the requirement for some additional parking for events. And so I just wanted to really focus on that. The pushing the, and Councilmember Middleton asked about how much space is lost by pushing the building closer. Well, we'd already pushed it in about five feet, and by pushing it in that additional space, we lose a whole row of chaises. And you may remember that the, when you were in the planning commission, or maybe not, that the building used to be three and a half stories high, and now we have just a two-story-high building. So the building, when we talk about character, we talk about fortress, we talk about in keeping of the historic neighborhood, it's much more now this project in keeping with that. By adding on the whole extra corner, an extra third of the property in those three buildings, we've only increased the number of rooms by very little because we reduced the number of rooms on the rest of the site. So it's spread out. It's much more, what I call, gentle project. And the fabric of it and the landscape of it and everything is the opposite of a fortress. But we can get into that with, with questions later. Obergeiss, your operator, sent us two letters now, which we forwarded to you, about their concerns about making sure that the guest experience around the pool is as open and as luxurious as possible. I had provided to council before a rendering of what it would look like along Bolardo, which is really the back of the parking lots for the shops and restaurants along Palm Canyon. It is not an attractive street right now. We had proposed initially planting, significant plantings on both sides of the street, and creating a canopy and an alley of trees, having heard concerns from a lot of the neighbors who like to walk or walk their dogs in the neighborhood, how it's pretty unsightly right now. So we think it'll be a great enhancement. We don't think the public would notice that five-foot difference that we're talking about, but it does take up a whole row of chaises, and it really compresses the luxury of, of the site. And I thank Flynn for his consideration of the zeebo, which will be a found object built to, you know, earthquake code and everything, but comprised of a lot of artifacts and antiquities that will go into creating this kind of whimsical folly. Regarding the parking, of course, we're not going to build the most expensive hotel per room ever built in Palm Springs. That's operated by an incredible brand like Obergeiss that will be functionally obsolete just because we can, because it has a historic exemption. That would be, you know, foolish, and no one's going to allow that to happen. We are, and willing to be very responsive, that none of our employees will ever park in a residential neighborhood. We're willing to have a significant...
Mr. Weintraub, we're having a connection issue. I'm going to call you right back.
Sure.
Yes, you can continue.
Okay. Sorry about that. So I don't know where you lost me, but I was talking about the parking, and we are willing to subject ourselves to significant penalties for any employees or guests parking in the residential neighborhood. The employees we can definitely control, and the guests will be charged a valet overnight fee regardless. So they would be disincentivized for looking to park into the residential neighborhood. But again, we are open to any suggestions the council or the planning department or code enforcement has to ensure that we are not a further burden for that perspective. For the additional parking spaces, we don't think they're required by code, and I think Josh Ballinger will speak to that. Does that mean my time is up?
Yes, it does. But we will, we will come back to you. We have other public comment, and then you'll have two minutes for rebuttal.
Okay, great. Thank you.
I'll call you back.
Bye.
Joshua Gottheim?
This is Anthony calling from the Palm Springs City Council meeting. You're live with the city council, and you have two minutes to provide your comments.
Terrific. Thank you. Yeah, Richard just, just asked me to specifically address the legal issue with the parking. Obviously, he talked about the practical issue. I'm not sure what the final proposed condition on parking says. The version from last week had some language, but, and then I got an additional draft yesterday. But the problem was that it did contain the requirement of a parking plan to be prepared after the hotel opens and is operating. And that whatever that plan calls for in terms of parking would then have to be provided in addition to the 94 spaces that are required initially. And there was also some talk of maybe 25 to 30 spaces additional. The language from last week, and I think the language from last night, in the parking conditions... conditions, would violate your own code, which protects Class I historic properties and says that adaptive reuse of historic Class I properties cannot be required to provide additional parking. As Richard said, he has every incentive to find that off-peak parking floor if it's available, if it's not being used during evenings or weekends, to find it and use it. He's going to do that because he has to run a hotel. But for the city to require it, to make a condition that the year after you open, we're going to have to add 25 or more spaces, there's no limit even on the 25, it could be even 161 that a nonhistoric property would have to provide. So if we're subject to a condition that says you might have to provide as many spaces as the parking study shows after you open, and it may not even be overflow weekends and evenings, and it might be as many spaces as you'd have to use for a nonhistoric property, that clearly goes against the intent of the code, which provides an exemption for those properties. Thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now. One more.
Okay, thanks.
The caller was Paul Sanford, so I'm going to return to Mr. Weintraub for his rebuttal.
Great, thank you.
Mr. Weintraub, you have two minutes to provide a rebuttal.
Okay, excellent, thank you. Okay, real quick, so regarding the parking, we, as we mentioned, from all intents and purposes, from Historic Preservation Code and from prior staff reports for the project, including one that's currently approved, did not require off-site parking with the same uses. If the council is inclined to say that we have to, even though it may not be required by code, then I ask for a couple of things. I really ask that it not be subjective, because in this tenuous environment, even before COVID, having a subjectivity of a major revenue generator, a lender and an operator cannot know whether or not they're going to be able to have events at a hotel. The 10-year requirement that we have to end of agreement for 10 years is draconian and almost impossible to create, even though we are in negotiations at something right now, no one's going to give us 10 years. And a parking management plan in the future that opens us up to have to provide even more spaces is also subjective. We do not believe that we are required to have to provide more parking, but if council is so inclined, I ask that it's not subjective. If you want to limit it to 25 spaces for later in the day, say between 6:00 p.m. and 10:00 p.m., and not within 200 feet or 300 feet, because the only thing that's within that range is the Bevmo. As I mentioned before, I own Redbird and St. Viviana's, I'm the main owner there. We have no parking, we have events for 800, we have no problems. I provided council also with several other examples of hotels in La Jolla and Santa Barbara that are very much underparked by code but have very successful banquet facilities without complaints from the neighbors. So please don't make this with too much subjectivity, because it will make it almost impossible to get financing and to have the operator satisfied. Thank you very much.
And Mr. Weintraub, you can stay on the line if there is council discussion or questions for you.
Sure.
Great, yes. You can stay on the line, so we will close the public hearing. And now questions, comments from council. Councilmember Middleton.
Flynn, I think I'm a little confused on the parking issue. My understanding was your recommendation was that a parking plan would be necessary only when special events are being held. Is that correct?
What I had recommended was that a parking management plan be provided if they have off-site parking spaces. The reason that I would want a parking management plan is, again, to go over things such as how the valet operates, the hours that the parking lot is used, et cetera. It is not intended to require additional parking spaces at a later point in time. So that's the only reason why I had requested a parking management plan for any off-site spaces.
And they would need the off-site spaces when?
Only for the special events, which, again, are not every day, but only periodically.
For the normal operation of the hotel, of guests and people going to the restaurant, there's no need for an off-site plan, is that correct?
That is correct. They do conform with the number of onsite spaces required for the hotel, restaurant, and spa uses.
And it's not uncommon, as I understand it, for when a special event is being held, that a parking management plan is submitted to you as a part of the special event application?
That is correct. We do use parking management plans in a number of different ways. We have a number of restaurants that have expanded but don't have additional onsite parking spaces. We've used a parking management plan in order to address off-site parking and their valet operations for that.
Mr. Weintraub, I'm struggling to understand what the issue is when it comes to parking. You've got what, you don't need to go to off-site parking in order to operate the hotel for guests, it's only when there are special events. And special events change from time to time, and submitting a parking plan as a part of the special event application is a normal process.
I appreciate that comment, and that's why I'm looking for some clarification from the planning department, because maybe what we're talking about is not the same thing at La Horizon or at the Parker or any place that was going to say have a small wedding or any kind of a wedding or an event or a high-end event during the film festival. What is required of those other hotels for those types of events? Because we anticipate that we will, like the Hotel Bel Air or others, have very high-end weddings. That's not unrealistic to think, or high-end corporate retreats. What is it that requires a special event permit for this parking plan or the requirement of some additional parking perhaps?
Flynn, do you want to answer that question?
For hotels, we do not require them to file for a special event permit every time they have a wedding or a meeting. I wouldn't recommend that we do that in the case of the Orchid Tree, again, because we don't do it for other hotels. What we have done with other hotels is we've either required them to have adequate onsite parking for their special events based on our code requirements, or else we've adopted some type of a parking management plan, which addresses how we park the additional visitors for special events.
So are you saying that if we, that a wedding does not fall under a special event? Or it does fall under a special event?
No, for hotel properties, they typically have meeting or event space, and as part of their normal operations, we don't require them to file a special event permit for each and every wedding that they have. So the answer is no, they're not required for other hotels.
Are you saying that, I'm just trying to understand this because it's not me who's concerned legitimately, it's a lender, it's the operator. Under what scenario would we be filing for a special event? And when, or what do you intend for those additional 25 spots to be used for? And a last question that goes on to that. The parking management plans that I've dealt with before, Councilperson Middleton, are, you know, really it's more about circulation, making sure people don't go through the neighborhood, making sure things aren't bottlenecked on Baristo, making sure that noise is kept to a minimum and the valet parkers aren't playing the radio. And if you need additional backup or valet parkers, that's what I've encountered in all projects that I've had this in the past with a parking management plan. I have not had a situation where they say, you now need to go and find X number of additional parking spots nearby, or you can't continue to have events. And that's the concern. So that's, those are just the main things.
I don't see it being required at all. What I hear is that as a part of a proposal for a event that's of significant size, that you would sit down with his department and develop a plan for that event.
Are weddings excluded and corporate events excluded?
Yeah, so Flynn, what size event would this park, special permit be needed for? I'm confused on that now, and I think the applicant is as well.
Again, for hotels, we have not required hotels to file a special event permit. So when they have weddings, when they have corporate retreats, things like that, that is considered to be the normal course of business for a hotel property and does not require a special event permit. So that's one of the reasons why we require hotels to have additional parking for the facilities where they do those types of events. Here in Palm Springs, you have Splash House, which is a little bit different in that it is at several hotels and is only for two weekends, I believe, out of the year. In that case, because it covers multiple properties, we have done something similar to a special event permit. But again, for normal operation of hotels, whenever they have weddings, whenever they have banquets, we don't require them to do a special event permit.
Would it be helpful to define a number of attendees that would trigger the need for a special event permit and?
Yes, that might be a solution for this particular situation here. If you'll just give me a few minutes, continue with a few other questions, let me put together a proposal in terms of what might require a special event permit for this particular facility as part of their discretionary approval.
Thank you. Great, okay, thank you. So we'll move away from parking, we'll come back to parking, so if you have parking hold until we get that, and I saw Councilmember Woods. Can you mute it?
Thank you. This question is for the applicant. Mr. Weintraub, you had mentioned a couple of times about not getting financing, but you have some pretty big milestones that you have to meet. Where are you at with the financing?
Great question, given the crazy world that we're in right now. I am self-financing all of the, because of these very tough milestones, I am self-financing with my own reserves. The plans and permits, they're, it's in the second figures, I'll tell you that, and I'm paying for that out of my own pocket and moving forward with a giant team right now in anticipation or hope that if I get the approvals, we are going to meet those milestones. The financing in the market, I could spend hours boring you with what's been going on in the capital markets, in the bond markets, and in the real estate financing market, but I'm quite confident that if any project is going to get financing, it's going to be an Auberge project in Palm Springs with this TOT rebate, which the lender will like very much. I currently have a very large hotel under construction with a major lender. They're very happy with my progress and my work so far. I have other projects that I am financing right now, they're very happy with my work so far. If we had to start today, you know, May 2020, I would say that the financing markets are very shaky, but I have already seen a whole seesaw on financing going from when the Fed lowered rates, you would think the rates would go down, they actually went up by about 75 to 100 basis points. They've now gone down by about 125 basis points because lenders want to lend money. But I couldn't tell you today what's going to happen, you know, a year from now.
Okay.
I'm not trying to be evasive, I just don't know.
Okay. But you're self-financing, and you're hoping to fill in that self-financing with other financing sources, is what I'm understanding?
Oh, sure. When it comes time to building this hotel, and this is a very expensive hotel to build, I either am able to get the financing and put up the additional equity required, which shouldn't be a problem from the equity from my side, but if I don't, I lose, I will have lost several millions of dollars in addition to the several millions of dollars that I've already put into the property, and that's my entrepreneurial risk. If I don't get it, then the TOT expires and I'm in bad shape. So you can better believe that the fact that I'm writing big checks today every, twice a month, is that I have the confidence that this is going to move forward. I wouldn't waste that valuable capital if I didn't believe so. So I'm betting on Palm Springs, even though I know it's facing a lot of issues as well.
So on Bolardo, you had, during your presentation, you said that you were putting a row of trees on each side of Bolardo? Was that the east and west side? Because your renderings don't show that.
Right. I had proposed to council before, and there is a rendering that I provided to the planning department, which showed an alley, I think of Palaverde Desert Museum's trees, along with some soft scape on both sides, so that you didn't see the back of the parking lots on Palm Canyon. And that was going to be partially paid for with the offset of certain fees that were not related to Riverside County. That conversation never got fully coalesced, but in concept, if you look at our plan now, we've now put a very significant amount of money into making sure that the back of the project on Bolardo is just as beautiful as the front of the project, with landscaping, with stone, with articulation, with false windows, which we call, you know, the window's still made out of iron and the glass in them, but there's nothing really behind them. So it's really quite beautiful and very luxurious and far superior to the currently approved project. If there is something to work out between now and whenever we start with creating an improved streetscape along Bolardo, I'm completely open to that, because I think it benefits everyone. I think it cools down the street and it creates a much more luxurious environment, more in the keeping with how it feels in the Las Palmas residential neighborhood.
And Bolardo is the street that you're asking for the variance and the setback, correct?
That's correct. And if you take a look at the rendering that we have provided, that's accurate to the plans, and you'll see that it looks like it could be on the front on Keweeah. It's really quite beautiful, you don't feel that it's the back of a building anymore. We put a lot of effort into the renderings after we had the meeting at the Planning Commission.
Great, thank you so much. Great, thank you. We have one more public comment, so we're going to reopen the hearing to take one more public comment. This is a city clerk. If you can call, please.
It is, yes.
You have two minutes and you're live with the city council. If you could please reduce your volume.
I will, thank you.
Thank you. You can go ahead and begin.
Okay, thank you, and. And as a developer and council, I appreciate all the great work that's done in on this project. I am one of the owners of the property that is on the corner of Keweeah and Arenas. And our only concern about the project, it's beautifully designed, is the parking. I am in the hospitality business myself, and I'm just very concerned. We have such a parking problem already in the tennis club area when there's an event at any one of the historic hotels, literally. We have to put up barriers on Keweeah to the parking for the residents of Desert Seville. And I don't understand with the beautiful lawns that are available in the restaurant and the bar that I've seen the plan, with the current parking ratio that's in the proposal on the property, it's just inadequate parking for management staff, guests at high occupancy, and then events. And I'm just concerned. I have to raise it. We already have a severe problem on the weekends when there's weddings at the neighboring properties and such, and I just don't know how we're going to deal with this additional demand of street parking that's not on the premise. So I do hope that the council and the developer, who's done a nice job in the planning, will take that under consideration. I know there was discussion of additional parking being located, or at least for events, but we're going to need something. And I thank you.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now.
Okay.
So we will.
Mr. Weintraub, you're live with the council again.
Oh, thank you.
Okay. Any other council member have questions? Mayor Proton Holstich?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I also got questions raised when we were talking about the parking. So just to be clear, so first, how was the number 25 to 35 picked? Where was that number? Why did the planning commission recommend that specific number?
Looking at the plans and the use of the property, the planning commission felt that additional off-site spaces were needed. They landed at that number as it provided some type of a break for the applicant in terms of the historic preservation waiver that is allowed from parking requirements, while still addressing the need to provide overflow parking. So again, they thought it was a reasonable number that would address the impact without being too much of a burden for the developer to find off-site spaces.
Could that number, because that seems like a minimal number in a way to not be, you know, allowed in another way. I don't know if valet or if there might be other solutions other than requiring a contract for 25 or 30 spaces off-site. Are there other ways to accommodate that increase, that number of parking spaces?
There wouldn't be a way to do it onsite. We'd have to look at other options. One of the things that you could look at is, as you've already suggested, having them fill or apply for special event permits when they have events that exceed the normal usage that one would expect at the hotel. You had just asked me prior to the public comment, what number should we use for special events? And then just based on the square footage of their meeting space, I would say that any special event that has more than 175 guests would be one that would require a special event permit. So that way, they could hold normal weddings, 100 guests, 150 guests, without having to do a special event permit. But anytime they had more than 175, they would fill out a special event permit and apply for that each and every time. And associated with that, they would demonstrate where those parking spaces would occur, or how they would get guests back and forth between the off-site parking and the hotel. So one solution, again, to summarize, is require them to provide the 94 spaces onsite and then have them apply for a special event permit anytime they have special events with more than 175 guests. So that might be one way to deal with it without requiring them to have off-site parking.
So you said that we do not require a special event permit for any other hotel other than a special event like Splash House, right?
That's correct.
So why would we require a special event permit for this hotel?
The only reason you would require it is if you don't require them to provide an off-site parking lot, which the applicant has objected to.
So are there other solutions, like a, there's no other solution? Because I'm personally opposed to, we've closed the public hearing, right, Mr. Mayor? I'm personally pretty opposed to requiring a special event for those event, permit for those events. Our special event permit process is in design. It needs fixing. It's not ideal. It creates a huge administrative burden on staff, in my opinion. You can tell me if this staff feels differently. It just seems like different treatment for a hotel. You know, this is a high-end hotel that does a lot, that will do a lot of high-end weddings. You know, the applicant talked about what other hotels do in other cities that are similar, and it doesn't sound like they're requiring special events. It's just another hoop for people who want to get married in Palm Springs to deal with. And it's just, we already require a lot of burden on that. So I'm wondering if there are other, what are the other solutions other than requiring a special event for every single event over, requiring a special event permit for every event over 175 people?
The options available to council are to approve the 94 onsite parking spaces and don't address the special events. The second option is to require the applicant to provide off-site parking. Or the third option is to require the applicant to file for a special event over a certain number of guests. So those are really the three options that would be available for you all to consider this evening.
You couldn't require like a parking plan overall? That wouldn't be event by event, but would be overall if you have an event over 175, this is what's going to happen?
You would do that probably as some type of an off-site parking plan because you have to park those people somewhere. So that would be option number two.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And again, Mr. Mayor, if I could comment. So the historical context of this is the concerns in the neighborhood on the parking. And again, this predates kind of the parking requirements we've had over the years. It doesn't take into account a more modern society that we live in with Uber, Lyft, and, you know, all those kinds of things. Our parking ordinances don't really account for that. So, correct, we are sort of in a transitory period, and those policies need to be looked at. But I think what Flynn is doing, he's laid out under the rules that we have now. So, you know, and one option is that you just, you just don't require that additional parking. But given what we have, those are the three that Flynn has ruled out. Now, certainly, there could be modifications of the policy that these kind of requirements could go away.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Councilmember Garner.
What is the max capacity at this hotel? It's not a very big site.
74 rooms, I believe, right?
Right. So that's how many people? I mean, how large are we going to be getting with events?
Maybe the applicant, what are the size events you think?
The largest events we would have would be for a wedding would be around 200 to 220 people. I don't think we could accommodate the type of food and service beyond that, except for extraordinary circumstances like the Film Festival, Coachella, or some other occasional events.
This is a question for Flynn. Flynn, when you made your discussion, normally a hotel's parking is also takes in its event space, is that correct?
Yes, we do require parking for event space as part of our parking requirements for hotels.
And this particular hotel is not providing any parking for the event spaces, is that correct?
In terms of a straight application of our parking code, that's correct. They meet the parking requirements for the hotel spa and restaurant uses, but not the event space or meeting space.
Great. Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, I'm sort of, sort of where council Mayor Proton Holstich is on this. I mean, so you have 74 guest rooms. So let's assume you're going to have about 150 people already there if you're having a wedding, because they'll take out bigger wedding than 175. So you're talking another 25 people, maybe 50 max, absolute max, which would be if they all drove and two people in a car, and sometimes there are more, sometimes less, that's 25 cars. That's assuming no one's walking from other hotels where they're staying nearby, taking Uber, Lyft, which is not realistic. So I just, I mean, this is a historic property that on other councils I've been on, there's been thoughts that we should just let them demolish it because we need something there so desperately. And I'm really concerned about doing things that will make this project not happen, that don't necessarily make sense. I agree with the city manager. Our parking requirements are for a different time and place. And we were doing parking studies that all got put on hold to really look at all of that. So it seems like it's adequately parked, except if you have another, an event with 25 to 50 more people than are staying at the hotel. Because typically hotels, you're going to buy out that for that big a wedding. So I'm not inclined to want to have them have a contract for 10 years for 25 to 30 parking spots that they're not going to use very often. That doesn't seem to make sense. And 175 just struck me as a low number for when you need that in place if that's almost the occupancy of the hotel, it's just a little more. So that's just my thoughts on that, just on the parking. So maybe we can finish parking and then move on to the setback issues, but.
You know, parking, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
Parking is always a difficult issue, right? We are, there's a, by narrowing the street through a general plan amendment, if we so approve it, we're really allowing this applicant to have a lot more onsite parking than what he normally would have if he just owned the site onto himself. But that's a big give on our part if we were to accept that. I do agree with Jeff and Christie that, you know, parking is, you never know how it's going to work. And I do think we need some checks and balances at some point if it becomes a problem. And I think there's some conditions in our, currently in the staff report that would allow us some leverage if they park in, because they can't park in the neighborhood. And we, and they are required to do a parking plan, which I think is important to do because when you do valet trips, you double your trips each time, is what you end up doing. So having a parking plan is good if they have problems, you know, if there are problems, we just need a hook to be able to go after those problems, which I think the condition takes care of.
Anyone else have anything on parking? Mayor Proton Holstich.
I agree with both, both the mayor and Councilmember Wood.
Councilmember Middleton, I think you're talking.
The number 175 may be on the low end. My experience has been that special event permits are a positive thing that help manage a specific event. So, but I tend to agree with the comments that we don't know what the parking loads are going to be. And I'd like to find a middle ground somewhere that everyone can agree with. Parking should not hold up this project.
Agreed. So Flynn, hearing all of that, do you have other thoughts on a parking plan, maybe if it's over 200 for events, or what the best way to do this is so the applicant has some sense of what's required?
Trying to balance the concerns about parking impacts with the desire to restore and renovate and use this property, what I might recommend, based on your input and discussion, is that we require them to provide the 94 spaces onsite and that they file for special event permits only when there are events with 250 or more guests. Would that address your concerns?
Yes, for me. Yes. Councilmember Garner.
Sorry. I feel like from the comments that we received in our packet from residents, that a lot of it had to do with street parking in the neighborhood and just the difficulty in parking for residents. So for me, I'm more interested in making sure that that's addressed. I think the number of parking spots seems okay to me, but are we going to address those concerns for people who live nearby?
Yes.
And I don't know, maybe there's already markers that indicate there's no parking for non-residents or not. I didn't quite see that in the report.
Mr. Mayor, if I might, what I would recommend relative to Councilmember Garner's concern about parking in the neighborhood is that we would modify Condition PLN 11 to identify that staff members and guests shall not use the onsite parking spaces in the residential neighborhood. And again, we can manage that through your special event permits where there are 250 or more guests.
But would that be managed, where I think Councilmember Garner was going, when there are less than 250 guests? That, and I think it was, from what I remember reading, that the employees won't be able to park in the neighborhood. That was going to be a condition on normal days, correct? Okay.
And, well, on that, maybe the applicant can speak to this, but if the employees are not going to be parking onsite or in the neighborhood, where are they going to be parking? Because that's also an issue too, is there's some places that the employees have to park very far away. And so are you taking this into consideration and providing a parking plan that accounts for your employees so that they aren't trekking from across the Palm Canyon?
Sure, of course, and thank you for asking that. We anticipate a lot of, not a lot, but several of our employees to be on J5 visas and coming from Europe, that's a very typical part of the Obergers plan, and renting apartments for them or a house, you know, not too far away. We will encourage employees to use public transportation, which we will pay for. We encourage employees to, if they live in the area, to bike or to carpool and find them parking that does not go into the residential neighborhood whatsoever. That's, we don't have it fully locked out right, locked down right now, but that's our intention. And that's why I'm so confident that I'm willing to accept any type of penalty or whatever if employees start parking in the residential neighborhood, because I'm going to make sure that that doesn't happen.
So Flynn, can something be added to that regarding that issue?
Relative to the employee parking, yes, we can address that in the conditions. As I had mentioned, Condition PLN 11 is one that will address that for daily operations and then during special events, we can do that as part of the special event permit.
Okay. Anything else on parking? Yeah, you have to unmute. There you go.
I think that the applicant brings up a very good point, and I think we just need to add a condition for a traffic demand management plan, which is really all the alternative stuff that he was talking about. And he can submit that plan. It doesn't need to be fleshed out now, but before he opens.
Okay, great. Do we want to talk about, move on to the variances? Anyone have any comments, questions? Go ahead, Councilmember Wood.
The variance is a tough one. The variance is a tough one here, particularly the variance. The variance is a tough one here, particularly the variance on Bellardo. It's a tough one because, you know, it's a new build. It's all brand-new build, one. And two, there's no real defining characteristics to the site, except that it's historic and has some historic buildings which we want to preserve. But I do think that if he is to push the building closer and we reduce the setback, the idea of requiring him to put these canopy trees, which he discussed on both sides of the street, might reduce the impact of something like that. And I also believe that what we really need to be doing is sending it back to AAC for a better articulation of the walls and hedges along all of the sides of the particular project. Thank you, Ms. Tran.
Sure, thank you. Anyone else? You know, I totally understand the issue with making it too narrow, right? This is gonna be a tough property to make, given its location and has the historic pieces. But we want it, I think, to Councilmember Woods' comment, if we're gonna give a variance, we're gonna want it to look really good. And I do think this has really changed the look of this on Bellardo from what we had seen previously in a really positive way, as far as not looking like the back of a building or a big wall. But I'm fine with it going back to AAC to look at if we're gonna give them more space to do that. Councilmember Middleton.
I, I support that. I struggle with this variance, but the difference between 11 and 15 feet is just not that great a difference. And so I would like to give this to AAC for them to work with staff and work with the applicant to make sure that Building N from the street on Bellardo is an extremely attractive impact, and I think that can be done. Any, it certainly will be more attractive than what is there now.
Yes, true that. Councilmember Garner.
I just wanna clarify, when we're talking about this, we're talking about staff's recommendations for the variance, correct? Is that what people are speaking to?
Yeah, so the thought would be.
Just confirming.
It goes beyond what staff is recommending, I think, right? So Flynn, can you jump in? Since we don't have it on the screen, we're going back and forth.
Yeah, what you've discussed is to allow both variances as the applicant has requested. You would allow an 11-foot variance on Baristo and then Building N on Bellardo, you would also allow the variance. However, the comments that have been made indicate that you would like the AAC to review that building and the landscaping along Bellardo. The applicant has proposed planting trees on both sides of Bellardo.
Okay, I see. That just seems, that's not much of a variance in 11. Going from 11 to, from 20 to 11 and 25 to 11. I'm, I'm not sure I agree with that. I think I'd rather trust the planning commission and, and what they, they denied it for a good reason.
Okay. And all these drawings and stuff were not available at the planning commission, as I recall. Which ones were those, Flynn?
Primarily the renderings of the streetscape were not available to the planning commission at the time that they discussed the case.
Thank you, that's helpful.
I mean, so maybe a way to do this, if everyone thinks, is, you know, we're, we're open to it, but we want AAC sort of to weigh in on what it would look like and bring it back to us for determination. Would that work?
What I would recommend is that we have the Architectural Advisory Committee review the final architectural drawings for Building N and the landscape plan for the streetscape around the perimeter of the property. You would approve the variance tonight, but you would see the final architectural and streetscape plans and the recommendations of the Architectural Advisory Committee. Would that be acceptable?
And we'd have to approve those for this to go forward, correct?
Yes.
Councilmember Garner? Everyone in agreement on that? Councilmember Roy?
Yeah, I just think we need to provide a little bit of direction towards, for the AAC. So articulation, particularly at the gates and things of that nature. I think we just want to provide a little bit of direction to AAC. And I, I just want to also say something that Councilmember Garner said. I, I do trust our planning commission and honor all the work our planning commission does. And I think that they've done a great job on this. I think the mayor had mentioned that what they had submitted earlier to what they've submitted now is only because of the work the planning commission, the AAC, has done. And I think it just needs a little more tweaking to make it happen.
Yes, thank you for that, that's an important point. So do you want to frame a motion for us, Flynn?
Certainly. In terms of the motion, you will be recommending, you will be approving the general plan amendment on the conditional use permit and the parking issues associated with that. Councilmember Woods has requested that a traffic demand management plan be submitted for review and approval prior to the opening of the hotel. We will also modify Planning Condition Number 11 to prohibit employee parking in the neighborhood. We will add a condition stating that the applicant shall apply for and receive a special event permit whenever special events have 250 or more guests. As part of that special event permit, we will address the valet routes, parking, et cetera, for those special events. We will make minor revisions to Condition ADM 12 relative to those standards and conditions. On the variance application, you will approve the variance with 11-foot setbacks along the Baristo and Bellardo frontage, with the condition that the Architectural Advisory Committee review the streetscape plan for the entire perimeter of the property, the walls, the gates, et cetera. And they will also review the architecture of Building N. The recommendation of the Architectural Advisory Committee on those items will be brought back to the city council for final approval. And then on the major architectural application, you would also be approving that application as well. So those are the four applications with the added conditions. I hope that captures everything that you had discussed.
Great, thank you. And just for the public, and although I know Councilmembers Garner and Wood were on the planning commission, during some of this time, one of the conditions on this property, in order to move forward and get the TOT, which to get it built, is that it's either an oberrage, and we've seen letters from oberrages indicating that's where it's going. And if it's not, it has to be a luxury project at the level of an American oberrage as determined by an outside hotel luxury consultant of the city's choosing, paid for by the applicant. So this can't be changed into something else. And I just wanted to sort of share that with folks. So with that, do we have a motion? Councilmember Middleton, you have to unmute.
I'll make that motion, and I also want to emphasize that this project continues to have extremely tight timeframes that have to be met. I move the director's recommendations as a motion.
Okay. Second.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Middleton, seconded by Councilmember Woods.
Councilmember Middleton.
Hi.
Councilmember Woods.
Aye.
Councilmember Garner.
Aye.
Mayor Protim Holstich.
Yes.
Mayor Corse.
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero.
Thank you. Do folks want to take a short break, it's 8:30?
Yes.
Come back in 10 minutes, and then we'll do the other hearing. Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. In zoning code relevant to development standards for accessory dwelling units and junior accessory dwelling units, staff report please.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, the state just recently adopted new requirements for accessory dwelling units that took effect in January of this year. So by that action, the city also needs to modify our accessory dwelling unit regulations in order to address that. If I could go to the PowerPoint, please. One of the things that the ordinance does is it introduces a new type of accessory dwelling unit, and it's called a junior accessory dwelling unit. And that is an accessory dwelling unit that's 500 square feet in area or less and contained entirely within a single family structure. And a junior accessory dwelling unit may be permitted in addition to a detached accessory dwelling unit on a single-family lot. So that's something that is brand-new and something that will be new here in Palm Springs. In terms of the other changes to the ordinance, under state law, it identifies three types of approval processes for accessory dwelling units. Type 1, as we're calling it, requires only a building permit, and so that's an administrative review. Type 2 requires a building permit and what's called an accessory dwelling unit permit, which would be issued by the planning department and is also just an administrative review. And then type 3, for certain types of accessory dwelling units, it would require a conditional use permit, which would be a discretionary review by the Planning Commission. In terms of the type 1 process and the types that are allowed under a type 1 process, any accessory dwelling unit that's converted from existing space, so for example, converted from a garage, or any new detached accessory dwelling unit on a single-family lot that's less than 800 square feet in area, would be permitted by a building permit. State law also allows for accessory dwelling units on multifamily properties. And under a type 1 building permit process, that could be a new ADU that's from converted existing space, so some type of a garage structure, a carport structure on a multifamily property. Or it would also allow two new detached accessory dwelling units on a multifamily property under a building permit. The type 2 ADU permit, which requires both a planning ADU permit and a building permit from the Building and Safety Department, but still an administrative process, would allow a studio or a one-bedroom ADU up to 850 square feet, or a two-bedroom ADU up to 1,000 square feet. It also establishes setbacks, that it only has to have a four-foot setback from side or rear property lines, places a height limit, and then also has some architectural standards, which requires it to be compatible with the principal dwelling, and then establishes landscaping requirements. And this is particularly to address the situation where it may be closer to the setback, so that there's landscaping as buffer from the adjacent neighbor. Any type of accessory dwelling unit that doesn't meet the type 1 or type 2 criteria could be permitted via a conditional use permit. And again, as I had mentioned, that would be a discretionary action by the Planning Commission. There are also new general requirements for parking. There was generally a requirement for one space per accessory dwelling unit, except for situations where the accessory dwelling units are in a converted space. So for example, in a converted garage, an additional parking space would not be required. And then there are also certain alternatives that exist. For example, if the ADU is within a half-mile of public transit, and there's a number of other specific situations where parking spaces would not be required. Also, per state law, there's a minimum 30-day rental term, which we are requiring. Under state law, there's also an owner occupancy requirement, so that the owner has to reside on the property for any ADU that's constructed after January 1st of 2025. State law also requires deed restrictions, so that the property owner agrees to these restrictions, and requires income reporting on an annual basis. One of the reasons why that's required is it gives us the opportunity to report on meeting the needs of affordable housing here in our community. And so even though it's a state requirement, it will benefit us locally by having an annual reporting requirement. One of the other things that's required under state law and will be in our ordinance is that the property owner will be required to provide notice of construction to neighbors as they commence construction on their accessory dwelling unit. Planning Commission reviewed this ordinance on April 8th and recommended approval as drafted. With the adoption of this ordinance, there are some additional things that staff will need to do to help implement the ordinance. One of the things that we would need to do is update our accessory dwelling unit page, which we are directing to property owners, so that they have a clear and complete picture of all the things that need to be done in order to develop an ADU on their property. We also need to prepare the deed restriction and income reporting forms, so that those are simple and easily accessible to owners who may be considering the construction of an ADU. We need to work on our ADU permit application, so we have that available to go once the ordinance becomes effective. And then finally, one of the things that I would like to work on with the Building and Safety Department is a preapproval process for modular or prefabricated accessory dwelling units. This is something that a number of communities have already started working on. City of San Jose, for example, City of Encinitas has worked on a number of preapproved designs. And so I think that's something that we need to do as well in order to make this easier for the public to construct accessory dwelling units. That concludes my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Do you have any questions before we open the public hearing?
I do, if I can, Mr. Mayor. I just thank you for that really good staff report. The staff report was really clear, and I appreciate the verbal report just now. So can you explain, we're primarily just implementing state law, right?
That is correct. Our ordinance hews very closely to state requirements. Our attorney has given us guidance that we need to be particularly mindful of the state requirements and make sure we implement them appropriately. So yes, it is very close to state law requirements.
Thank you. And then which elements are the significant departures or differences from state law?
Really, the only thing that we've done that is different is that we've identified type 1, type 2, and type 3, in order to make it clearer for applicants. The way state law is written, it becomes a little bit confusing where a building permit is required versus where a ADU permit is required. And so by categorizing it as type 1, type 2, and type 3, I think it makes it easier to understand.
Thank you. That's helpful. And then can you explain just quickly what type 3 means in practice, what that would look like?
So in practice, a type 3 accessory dwelling unit would be one that is either larger than the square footage that is permitted in state law, or may have different setbacks than what is permitted under state law. Those are primarily the situations where we would see a type 3 accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Councilor Middleton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Flynn, and again, thank you for a really good report. A couple of questions. The ADUs, the JADUs, are they required to be rented?
No, they are not required to be rented. They could be occupied by a family member.
So they could in fact then be used as a casita or something else without... They could be called an ADU, but actually used for another purpose. Is that correct?
Potentially. Now, there are some restrictions on that, and that would be included in the deed restrictions that the property owner would need to record. So for example, the rental term, if there is a rental term, needs to be 30 days or longer, even if you're renting to a family member. It's not intended for short-term usage.
Okay. So they could not be turned into a vacation rental, as example?
No, I don't believe that they could. There's that 30-day restriction.
That it must be for 30 days or more? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
I am very supportive of this. It seems very straightforward. I guess my one concern is that our setback, the setback requirements are four feet as opposed to the normal 10 to the side and 15 to the back that we have. And I am hopeful that this does not become an opportunity for individuals who wanted to build a casita closer to the property line than they would otherwise be allowed to do, use this as an opportunity to get that closer proximity to the property line.
Just a reminder, we're on questions at the public hearing, so save comments for after, even though the applicant is us, so it's a little different than usual. Any other questions for staff?
So I have two. One was actually similar to our council member Middleton. The state law is it has to be at least 30-day rental. We could make it 60 or 90 days if we so wanted, correct?
That's one of the questions that came up at Planning Commission. And one of the things that our Planning Commission attorney recommended is that we keep the same language as state law. The reason being that there is also a need for month-to-month rentals and making those available for that purpose as well. So the direction that we were given is that we should keep it at 30 days, even though it may be desirable from an affordable housing standpoint to require longer periods of time.
Okay. I'll make my comments on that after the public hearing is officially over. And the second question was on parking. And I know we talked about this, we went beyond state law previously, I think, and we talked about this. Is there, is there a process where the parking can be waived, not just if it's within certain amount of space from public transit? Since public transit is not the same here as it is in many other places. But also, I know we talked about this, I just don't know where we landed with the last council, was where someone could apply for a waiver of the parking based on analysis of the neighborhood, right? There are some neighborhoods where there's a ton of parking, there's some where there isn't. Is that something we could hear?
Certainly. I think that's something that you could consider, because it's less stringent than what state law would allow, and so I think we would be okay in doing that. If that were the desire of city council, what I would recommend is that we amend that section of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance relative to parking as one of the exceptions, something along the lines that parking may be waived based on a demonstrated on-street parking plan, or something along those lines. And what I can do is, prior to second reading, draft that language for you and have that ready to go for second reading.
Great, thank you. Any other questions for staff before we open up the public hearing? Okay. So at this time, I'd like to open up the public hearing. The public is invited to speak on this public hearing item for up to two minutes. City Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Mayor, no public comment tonight.
Then we will close the public hearing and go back to discussion. Councilor Gardner.
So I think this is great. It opens up a lot of opportunities, and I appreciate, Flynn, the photos that you chose. It gives us all something to strive for. I can only, one can only hope to live in the ADU that's that nice. But I do really, I appreciate your report, and I think this just opens up a lot of opportunities for us as a city, and especially in Palm Springs, we have a lot of lots that are really large. So there's plenty of room to do this, and this just makes the process much simpler for people who would like to, like to do this. So thank you for this work.
Anyone else? Councilor Woods.
No, obviously, we need to be in compliance with state law. But I completely agree with Councilmember Gardner that this really does help us with providing some potentially low-income housing, or at least some other housing choices that are out there. And I think that was the impetus behind the state law. So I would support it.
Great. Yeah, my concerns, and I do support this, and I'd like to, there's no objection, bring back on second reading, the inability to waive parking based on on-street parking, because I think that could really help with getting more of these for housing. Obviously, in some neighborhoods, that won't work, but in some, it would. I'd like that only to be when it's, I mean, I share the concern Councilmember Middleton raised about these becoming casitas just in different areas. And also, I get that month-to-month, but I have a little concern that in a tourism-based market, that what we'll end up getting is people renting these out for 30 days, even if a person's staying two weeks, and not being used for the purpose we want. So I'm really torn on 30 days versus a little longer that converts to month-to-month. So I just want to throw that out for if anyone else has any thoughts on it.
I mean, I, if I can, Mayor, I think that's, that's true. It is helpful to have them used for longer-term leases. But it is also nice to have that transitional use as well. Especially, I mean, I think of, I think of myself as somebody who rents, but maybe if I were going to buy and needed something temporary for 30 days or something, it would be nice to have that option, or moving to the city and needing something temporary before finding something more permanent. So yeah, I'm also a little bit torn with what to do on that.
Okay. You have a pro and a hostage?
Yeah, thank you. I think it's a really good point. I think that is a risk in a tourism economy like ours. I do know that a lot of my coworkers, people I've worked with, they have used some of these as transitional housing, or if they have a temporary job and they don't know how long they'll be there, you know, those are the flexible options. You know, or students, things like that. So it's hard to balance. I think a lot of the housing in Palm Springs is month-to-month, unfortunately. So it's hard to know how to balance that. But I would probably err on the side of being more flexible to, because it really is, you know, often students, people who have a short-term job, things like that, who need more flexibility. I do, I love the idea that the mayor had of looking at other exemptions or waivers for parking. I'm trying to recall the other ADU ordinances that we've passed, and I know the state is bringing like multiple ADU bills every single legislative cycle. It's like the sexy topic, and they won't stop, and we're gonna have to keep doing this, even though they're not as practical here, or they're not as used yet here. But I like the idea, and I'm trying to recall, I think there was a whole list in some of the legislation of when you could have a parking waiver. So I think there were like five or six categories that the state has indicated, or that we've indicated, when you can get parking. So I'm wondering if we can, I like the idea of a parking plan, or looking at if there's parking available on the street. The other people, you know, there might be other reasons that people don't need to provide that parking, too.
Great. And Flynn, one other thing, and it wouldn't go in the ordinance, but if to give some thought, maybe we can talk at the next meeting about how we can promote and publicize this. I think last time when we did it, you know, we didn't think that through, and I think a lot of residents don't know this, it's an option. a lot of residents don't know this, it's an option for them. You know, there's, there are companies, I listened to a podcast on this, and that go in and will convert, if they have enough in a city, like 10 or 15, they'll convert someone's garage into this and work out, you know, how they share the rent, they pay for all of it, and then after a certain number of years, it all goes to the homeowner. Just that we really promote this because we desperately need housing like this, and I think this is great, but I'd love to see us come up with a way to promote it, and maybe off of the city manager, that's something we could work on, separate from just planning. Councilmember Woods?
So here in Palm Springs, I've seen great examples of where somebody has done an accessory dwelling unit, and I've seen horrific examples of where somebody has done where basically they cut a door into the garage door, and they look pretty bad. And Flynn, I'm just wondering, how much discretion do we have over that kind of design characteristics that somebody might be doing?
Tell you that we have limited discretion under state law relative to design issues. In the type-two accessory dwelling units, which are still an administrative process, there are architectural standards, so we will use those standards as guidelines and as guidance as we're reviewing plans for accessory dwelling units. What is a little bit more challenging will be the type-one that are reviewed as a building permit only. State law doesn't give us much ability to do any type of architectural review. However, we as staff will try and work with property owners as best we can in order to make sure that we have accessory dwelling units that are consistent with the architectural character of the neighborhood.
Mayor Protim Holstich?
Thank you. I just have a follow-up question. That was a good comment, councilmember Woods. I know when I was in college and in law school, a lot of people were living in garages, or I loved to rent ADUs that had no facilities. So I'm just, I'm skimming, I think it's a good point, I'm skimming the condition here and what the state requires again. So it looks like it does require, Flynn, certain facilities, like a kitchen or other kitchenette or other type sewage, you know, connection, things like that, to make it habitable?
Yes, that's correct. It does require sanitary facilities and cooking facilities both. So those are required.
For the junior ones as well? I think so. Okay, thank you.
Nothing else? Do you have enough for a motion, Flynn?
Additional language for you on second reading.
Okay, great. So do we have a motion?
A motion?
A motion by councilmember Garner, second by? Second by councilmember Middleton.
Councilmember Garner?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Middleton?
Aye.
Councilmember Woods?
Aye.
Mayor Protim Holstich?
Yeah.
Mayor Kors?
Yes.
Motion passes five to zero, and I'll read the ordinance title and ordinance of the city council of the city of Palm Springs, California, amending sections 91, 00.10, 92.13.00, and 93.23.14 of the Palm Springs zoning code relating to accessory dwelling units and junior accessory, accessory dwelling units, and determining the ordinance to be exempt from CEQA.
Great, thank you. So we'll move to our next item, which is item 4A, discussion of the impacts and responses to the local emergency related to the novel coronavirus, including discussion and direction regarding emergency orders concerning recreation facilities such as golf, tennis, pickleball, and pools. Staff report, please.
Yes, Honorable Mayor, members of the city council. At the April 23rd city council meeting, the city council took a look at a number of the different city emergency orders that the city had issued and ratified a number of them. Some of them were amended. For instance, the hotel and vacation rental order was extended and amended. The city council also took action on the city's order dealing with outdoor recreational activities such as tennis and pickleball courts and golf courses. Earlier that week, the county had issued an order amending its prior order dealing with golf courses and had allowed for the reopening of golf courses. So at the April 23rd city council meeting, the city council considered its order dealing with golf courses, and based on the limited amount of time that the city had had to, to look at that issue, the city council decided to hold off on amending its order to allow for the reopening of golf courses. Instead, the city council appointed an ad hoc subcommittee of councilmembers Milton and Garner to investigate the possibility of allowing for the limited reopening of these facilities, including considering what proper precautions might need to be undertaken in order to reduce the risk of spread of, of COVID. The subcommittee has met several times in the intervening time period and has provided their recommendation for golf courses as well as tennis and pickleball courts. In addition, the county has issued two sets of guidances on private community pools. About two weeks ago, actually, I think it was the, the evening of the April 23rd city council meeting, the county of Riverside issued a, a, a guidance, frequently asked questions document that allowed for the reopening of, of private community pools, and that was limited to one person per pool. In the intervening time period this last week, the county has issued another bit of guidance that extends that to allow for more opening of, of private community pools as long as there is social distancing. And with regard to jacuzzis, the county guidance suggests that only one person or one household be allowed in the, in the jacuzzi. The county guidance dealing with community pools also appears to allow for the sort of reopening of the, of the pool areas as long as there's social distancing implemented. So it's a rapidly moving set of issues that has been going on at the county level. In addition, last week, the county, two county supervisors agendized an item for the supervisor's consideration on May 5th of possibly rescinding the four existing county orders that are still in effect. After many hours of, of public comment on Tuesday, the county board of supervisors continued the item till tomorrow on Friday, at which time they'll take it up. And so therefore, staff has prepared an attachment to the staff reports that identifies those four county orders, kind of summarizing what those orders do, and also comparing them to the six city orders that are still in effect. So at this time, I will turn it over to the council subcommittee so that they can provide their recommendations.
Thank you. So I'm, I'm gonna go ahead and start for it, but before I do, Jeff, I'm actually wondering if you could just clarify the current state, I'm sorry. Yeah, the current order for social distancing and masks, because I know there's been a lot of confusion lately, so can you just clarify what exactly is required right now?
And just, Jeff, just so you know, the county May 1st changes, we have the slide up that lays those out that might be helpful for council and the public. Aaron, if we could put that up for folks? Thank you. City Attorney, do you want to go through it, or whatever is easiest?
So it, it's probably easier to identify when face coverings are required. It, it's essentially in situations when you're out in public and you're not able to maintain social distancing. So if you're waiting in line to go inside of, of a store, when you're inside of a store, when you're picking up food at a restaurant, if you're on public transportation, in a taxi or a rideshare, if you're in a healthcare setting where you're, again, not maintaining social distancing, those are the situations where you should be wearing face coverings under the current county orders. Under the county orders, face coverings are not required when you're at home, when you're in a car alone, when you're outdoors and able to maintain social distancing. So if you're going on a walk and there's plenty of room between you and, and other people who aren't in your household, in those situations, under the county orders, you're not required to wear a face covering. Under the city's order, several orders, we, we require face coverings in all essential businesses, and that requirement is imposed on the essential business as opposed necessarily on the individual. So if there's a grocery store or a restaurant that's open for pickup or delivery, all people who are inside those essential businesses are required to wear face coverings. In addition, our order dealing with essential and non-essential construction requires construction workers who are outdoors and, and doing construction that's considered essential, they are required to wear face coverings. And we also adopted an order dealing with grocery stores and, and drugstores, that also further implements the face covering requirements in those types of businesses.
Thank you. Thank you to our city attorney. I wanted you to clarify that just because I know we've received a ton of questions from the public on, on that, so thank you for clarifying. So councilmember Middleton and I met several times together, just the two of us, and we also met with staff. We spoke with residents. We also spoke with different golf courses in the city. We really wanted to make sure that we were getting as much information as possible from all of the different stakeholders. And I think what we have presented is something that allows us to be more thoughtful about our outdoor use, is recommending that we open golf and tennis and pickleball with these certain requirements. And the big thing is following along with recommendations that we've, we've seen in other places, for instance, singles play instead of doubles, requiring, requiring a lot of the things that the park and play suggest. And that seems so far has been very well-received. That includes things like making sure that only one person to a golf cart unless they're of the same household, limiting any access to indoor areas, such as pro shops, pre-reservations to make sure that we don't have a lot of people congregating in one, one area, as well as, as providing staffing at our public tennis and pickleball courts and, and requiring pre-reservation for, for that. And I think that one thing as well that we discussed a lot at the last meeting was making sure that there's proper PPE for employees at all of these locations as well, and requiring that in order to be open, that this, this occurs. The other thing is as well is that everyone needs to submit to us a plan for reopening. So until we receive, we were to receive a plan, nothing would be able to reopen, which helps to make sure that we have the buy-in from the courses to say that they're going to, to act appropriately. But that is the, the big thing that I think we should, that I want to get us started with. I know that pools are another issue, but I feel like that might be better to address separately. Councilmember Middleton, what do you want to add?
I want to thank you, and I want to thank the staff for all of the work that has gone into this. And we received an incredible amount of public input in this question, and including some, some very, very thoughtful input from individuals. To go very specifically to golf, one of the things, as councilmember Garner mentioned, is we're requiring that the golf course operator provide to us a detailed plan as to how they will reopen, one that will ensure the safety of their staff, their customers, and also their neighbors. And one of the issues that we spent a lot of time discussing is ensuring that there was safety for the neighbors. That mostly takes the form of where residences approach a golf course, that we, the golf course operator is going to have to have enhanced programs and enforcement to ensure that no one leaves the golf course and goes on to a private home. So we have called for signage at the front of golf courses to make clear that they are not allowed under any circumstances to go on to a private home. We've also called that if someone breaks that rule, they should, they should be subject to eviction from the course and barred from playing on that course for the duration of this emergency. And we're gonna put it in the hands of the operators to make certain that they are following through. And we've received, frankly, very positive response from the operators. They understand that we are in a different situation than we've been in before. The National Golf Course Operators Organization came out with rules very early regarding how things could be reopened. Many of the public comments that we received this evening had to do with flag sticks, and that really reflects that we were in part looking at an early version of the golf course operators' recommendations. And subsequent to that, individuals have come up with new ways of keeping a flag stick in and still making sure that people are touching only their ball as they are retrieving. Everyone here will be required to reserve in advance. The golf courses that are subject to these rules are Seven Lakes, Ascena, the O'Donnell Course, Mesquite, and the Takwitz Creek Course, which is our municipal court. And we want to work very closely with each and every one of those operators to make sure that as they reopen, they stretch out tee times between players so that there is less running into one another on the course, and emphasize again that we are reopening because it is important for people to get out and have exercise and to have an opportunity to do exercise. But the plans are not to be plans on paper. Each and every operator is gonna have a clear responsibility to make sure that they open and operate in a fashion that protects their staff, their customers, and their neighbors.
So thank you both so much for all of the work in a very quick turnaround time so that this got out to the public with enough time for them to weigh in. And, you know, doing this with public comment and public input is really important in our city, and so I really appreciate all that you and staff did to turn this around in less than a week, so the public had a chance to have this and weigh in. And I think we've all gotten comments, I'm sure you two got a lot more than the rest of us. So other councilmember comments, questions? And we'll just focus, I think, on golf, tennis, and pickleball this time, if that makes sense, and then we'll move on to the other issues, as councilmember Garner suggested. So I have just a few. Did you have someone else wanting to go first? No, okay. So I just had a few things I just wanted to touch on. So one issue that's came up in comments and some calls I received is on golf flags, which, as long as the cup, as you're suggesting, is above ground, golf flags aren't in the rules, I've been finding, since no one would touch them. So is that something, is there flexibility on? Because it is a way for someone to be able to see where the hole is on longer holes. So I just wanted to get your thinking on that.
I would like to see us allow the golf flag to remain in place. It's, it's an important part of the game of golf, and there is now new systems in place that allow the golf flag to remain in place and for people to be protected as they retrieve the golf ball.
Great. So thank you. So thank you. That's helpful. Number two, as, and I presume you've talked to O'Donnell as well, so may have heard this, they don't operate with any set tee times or appointments. They never have that many people playing. People go, they just start on a hole that's open. They said they could have the pro there to make sure that if all nine, if there are more than nine groups, they would tell people to wait in a car or go home. But this requires appointments, so I just want to know your thinking on that as well.
I can address that. As far as that concern goes, I think in normal times before this, that would make sense for them to not have to need appointments. But I think right now, because people are clamoring to play golf, we are going to just naturally see people showing up, especially because there are limited times right now due to the heat of when people will play. So I think it does make sense to require those pre-reservations even though they normally do not.
Great. Okay. Thank you for that.
O'Donnell tells me they only have 35 to 45 members that are actually in town to play golf right now, so it shouldn't be an issue, but I think they can handle making a phone call to say I'm coming over.
Uh huh. Okay. Great. Thank you. And the last thing on golf, and then just a couple few things on tennis and pickleball, was some had suggested, we heard one tonight, of only having one of the city's golf courses initially open. Some because their homes all on one and people are concerned, especially people with health issues, and others because they'd like to have one, since it's a city-owned property, that it is a really accessible biking, walking location. So I don't know if that came up, and just wanted to get your thoughts on that.
I think that's something that staff should explore with the management of the city golf course. And the recommendation of only opening one, we've not had time to really evaluate that with management as to what the impact would be. We did, there's always differences of opinion, and one of the emails that we received for that particular area was a request, please get the golfers back on the course because they are more observant of the rules than the dog walkers are. Now, I don't know if that's a universal opinion or not, but I would like to see staff work with the neighbors and with Takwitz Creek management on how they reopen the number of courses.
Great. And then, actually, I did have one more question on golf. Several of the courses have said they submitted plans already, some today. How quick can staff or the subcommittee turn those around? As I know, if we're going to reopen it, there are a lot of people who plan to be there at six in the morning tomorrow, so that may not happen, but how quickly do you think these can be turned around? Maybe that's more of a staff question, but.
Hi, Mayor. Marcus Fuller. Century Golf has already prepared a plan along the guidelines that were previously released, which could easily be updated with the recommendations being proposed by council or considered tonight. So I think we could work with them starting tomorrow to perhaps have an opening either this weekend or Monday, whatever the wish of the council is.
Okay. And you could do the same with the other courses, some who said they already submitted plans today?
That's correct.
Okay. Great. Thank you. And then on tennis and pickleball, just so it's clear, if it's in, you're recommending singles if it's in a private HOA or club, and you're requiring it if it's a city property, correct? Just so I'm clear on what the recommendation is?
Yes.
Okay.
And that mostly is enforcement.
Okay. And then, the other question I have, and if we're going to have signage at any places or, you know, Riverside County Public Health, some of the golf organizations are saying they strongly are discouraging people who are 65 and older or with underlying health conditions to engage in these activities. So if we do signage, we might want to include that in the signage. People will make their own decisions on that, but at least so people know that, what the recommendations are from public health officials. And then for tennis and pickleball, the face covering issue, obviously, since you've done this, the county has said, if you can keep six feet, which you can in singles, probably more easily in doubles, especially in pickleball where they're closer together, they're not needed, and given the heat, we heard from some folks. But then if you're engaging with staff or talking, you know, on the way out, you need to have face covering. So is that something the subcommittee's recommending, or are you still recommending face coverings for those?
I think that it's something that we haven't gotten into as much as we did with the other aspects of it. I do think that personally, that people should have the face covering with them for those instances, like you said, in dealing with staff or being in areas that are close to it. We are getting into a time where we have higher temperatures, and I don't know how feasible it is for people to truly keep those on. I know I've tried to exercise with the face covering, and it's not always possible because of the heat, so I'm not sure that we can really require that.
Okay. And I would support that change, but I do think people should have to have them with them if they're in these facilities, because they're going to come in contact with staff or other people, and that's when, you know, under the county's current requirements, they need to have them on. And I would recommend that we, as we get to that, but we'll talk about it broader later, that if the county does make that a recommendation, that we keep that as a requirement, because I think it's, will allow more people to participate in more activities and go to more stores and help the economy by having the face covering. So that's all I had on those issues.
The one comment I would like to add on the requirement on public courses that it be singles only, that's something that we think we needed to do as an interim step to make sure that it was safe. We truly understand that most pickleball games and most tennis matches in our area are doubles. So on the private courses, we're allowing them to make a decision as to whether they're going to allow doubles, but I would like to come back and revisit based on actual experience over the next few weeks with how it works on our public courses.
Okay. And staffing in public court of tennis and pickleball, as I understand it, is not that they're going to be there all the time checking people in or under tents, as was discussed two weeks ago, but more just a check on that people are following the rules occasionally? Or not?
So the recommendation from the study session that we held with Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Middleton, the first option was, is to recommend that it be staffed from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and then again from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. And then option number two would be to just have it monitored on occasion throughout the day with staff driving to check on the amenities, to be able to report back if those guidelines that are set are being followed.
Okay. And did the subcommittee have one they liked and the other, or is there a split?
I think there was a split. We both are concerned about two conflicting things. If we don't have staff there, we're fearful that there will not be observance of the rules that we've put into place. But if we don't have staff there, we're asking staff to do some very hard work under difficult circumstances. I think the director had defined a plan that rotated staff on a very regular basis, but it is certainly an imposition on staff.
Okay. Thank you. That was helpful. Any other questions or comments?
Mr. Mayor, I would just note that the Parks and Recreation Director has created the plan, and that additional cost, we believe, would be about, you said, about $3,000 per week, $2,600?
$2,700.
Twenty-seven hundred per week. So what we would do is, the staff that's currently still working as essential, they would do part of this, and then we would bring a certain number back of the not critical service staff, we'd bring them back on board to do the roundout on the other rounds.
I'll save my comments for, wait, do that, let me see if there are other questions or comments from other councilmembers. Your approach on hold, Steve?
Thank you. Thank you to Lisa and Grace for working on this. Not only did you do it really quickly, but the county was changing the orders on you as you were doing it, so thank you for all of your work on this. I just have a few questions. First, I know we had debated last time about being consistent with the county versus doing our own orders, so maybe you could tell me a little bit about, and it looks like you incorporated most of the county orders but just made them mandatory, because the county just recommended following the play rules and things like that. But just for the public, and for me, could you explain a little bit your thought about how you came up with these specific recommendations?
Sure. I think the county basically says the park and play rules apply, but when we looked at the park and play rules, most of the things on the list just said recommended, and we felt like that was not good enough, and that there were a lot of those things that just needed to be strictly enforced. And I'm sure there are a lot of courses that were going to strictly enforce them anyway, but we wanted to make sure that that was clear, just so that everybody was protected to the fullest extent. And I think what Councilmember Middleton mentioned before, as well, is that we figure it's better to be stricter now, and then if things go well, then we can loosen things up and revisit things.
Thanks. That's really helpful. That makes a lot of sense, and I agree with 98% of your recommendations, so thank you. I just want to go over a few of them, and I'll just, instead of cross-examining you, maybe just say my comments, but I do have a few just general questions. So we talked about masks being required, or maybe changing it to mask need to be on your person when you're playing tennis, but not necessarily worn if it is difficult while playing. What about golf? So are golf, is this order, does that require face mask while playing golf? Because the county had changed that rule, right?
Right. I think it just, for both sports, it's just have them on your person, have them, you know.
Up on your face.
Yeah. Whether, I think it's just the same with anything, if you're outside, have them available, so that if you do get too, you know, nearer to somebody, you can put it on.
Yeah. That makes sense to me, because I am concerned about people trying to exercise outside with the heat, could cause worse problems for folks. So I agree with all of the recommendations. Thank you. I think it's really excellent work and excellent recommendations. Some of my questions are concerns. So primarily, I am concerned about the tennis court operator. So I would, you know, ask maybe that we look at the option of having staff potentially drive by or be socially distant. I'm really concerned, I've done a lot of work for workers' rights and heat, and it's too hot outside, so I think to staff up and have people outside for extended periods of time. And I think if people want to play tennis or pickleball, they're assuming the risk that that is putting them at risk in, you know, near proximity to people who might be sick. And I don't want to do, I'm really concerned about staff or workers not having that option. And so I would really ask that we not require a tennis court operator, because I think it's too burdensome on staff in a time we're really going to have to, you know, we don't have full capacity of staff, you know, we're going to, we have essential duties we need to do. I just am concerned about the extra costs, the extra staff time, the problems working outside in the heat and working in a pandemic. And then I had kind of the same issue for, it looks like a tennis court operator is required for HOAs for private courses, is the way I read it. I don't know if that's true.
No, not for the private courses. I mean, that would be something that I guess they could decide to do, but we weren't requiring it.
So, okay, so I see in the staff report, it says private tennis courts and pickleball courts, and it references the tennis pickleball court operator must ensure. So that led me to think that there should be, there's requiring of a tennis court operator for those private?
No, I think that's more of each, for instance, if it's in an HOA, the HOA should have some sort of enforcement measures to make sure that people are complying.
Got it.
But not somebody physically there.
Right. And that's my, I know we're having a lot of public comment on pools, because the HOAs are concerned about enforcement and liability, and they're not opening up because they feel the rules are too burdensome, but I just want to make sure that we're not, you know, requiring too much enforcement on HOAs when they're actually just not going to open them up at all, because it's too hard. So I think an operator does, or, you know, too strict of enforcement does that. And then, just last two points, so I was wondering about opening it up only to proven residents. So we heard some public comment, you know, I understand that we don't want people flocking to Palm Springs, they're going on golf vacations even though they couldn't stay anywhere, things like that, but maybe just think about, or, you know, what was your thinking in requiring it residence only? I think it might get complicated if there's, you know, workers like nurses or doctors who are sheltering in place or working here, and they're not, you know, it says full-time or part-time resident, but, you know, how do we define that? And then I'm usually pretty concerned if it's like residency requirements, because I've been like a young person or a student without the ability to prove my residency to access city services, and I'm wondering about the burden on staff to actually prove that and look people's, you know, papers to play. It just seems like maybe that's burdensome. So what were you all thinking on that?
Me, there are two different groups here, with tennis courts and with pickleball courts. One of the issues that we run into is, those are more compact spaces, and there has been, with both, a significant shortage of courts available. And so for the public courts with tennis and with pickleball, it makes sense that we at least start with residents. And if, in fact, we've got the capacity to expand, then I think we can. We had conversation with applying those same rules to the golf courses. It's not an issue with the privately owned clubs. It is a major issue for places like Takwitz Creek and for Ascena, both of which a significant number of their golfers do not live in Palm Springs. And so we, ultimately, it makes sense to allow them to continue to have the course open to people who do not live in Palm Springs, and they are not compact spaces. There's plenty of room for people to move around.
That makes a lot of sense to me, and I would agree with that recommendation. So I think I read it differently. So yeah, compact spaces, because what we're trying to avoid is just too many people in one small space. So I agree with that. That makes a lot of sense. And then that's what you did for the members only, too, right? You had changed it to just residents. So, yeah, I would just ask if we want to think about, is it just full-time and part-time residents? Do we have to require them to prove their residency with papers? You know, at some point, we're going to have to just, I think, let people self-enforce some of this and trust people to do the right thing and follow the rules, and we've been getting a lot of compliance. And then I think my last question might be for staff about the revenue for our golf course. So we're proposing, and I was really swayed by the comments about opening the So we're proposing, and I was really swayed by the comments about opening the resort course versus the legend course because people's homes are right on that and it is narrow. Though I really like the subcommittee's recommendation on that, but I'm just wondering, you know, do we have a sense of the cost to the city, how much we're going to be paying to operate our city golf course versus how much we might get in minimal revenue with people playing?
We are incurring a cost as we speak with a limited skeleton crew essentially monitoring the city's golf course and providing the minimal landscape maintenance and services there at the golf course. So opening it would require a nominal increase in cost for a few additional staff to, you know, implement the new program allowing for this golf course play. So any revenue that is generated will help go to the bottom line. I don't have specific numbers, but not prepared for that question. That's my gut answer to you at this point.
Thank you. That's really helpful because most of our cost for the golf course is the bond payment. And we're trying to kind of recoup the cost of our annual bond payment from some revenue from some play on it, right?
Yeah, that's correct. Generally, on a yearly basis, the golf course generates the revenues that covers the cost for operating the golf course, but for the underlying debt that was issued for construction of the golf course.
Yeah, thank you. Those are all my questions. So maybe to summarize in my comments, I agree with the recommendations. I think they're excellent. I would just ask that we look at not requiring a tennis court operator and not requiring staff to work in the heat and in, with potentially infected people and to not require documentation to prove that you're a resident to use any of the facilities. I think everything else, based on our back and forth, I think we agree.
I'll just weigh in. I agree with all of those as well. I'm not sure on having some way to know that someone's a resident. You know, we know just from when the indoor courts at DeMuth, when we looked, more than half the people lived in other cities that didn't provide pickleball courts. And given the limited hours in the summer, and this is our taxpayers' money, I'm a little concerned that we're going to get people from other cities taking spaces that our residents would want. So I'm just wondering if there's something just, you know, I mean, it could be almost anything, but something to show they're, you know, a real Palm Springs resident, at least initially, to make sure we have the room. Because that's my other concern is I want to make sure we're getting this for residents. I share your view. I don't like requiring documentation on these things. I do want to make sure these are Palm Springs residents get first ability to use these services because we provide things other cities don't provide at a cost to our taxpayers.
For public tennis and pickleball or for both private and public?
Just for public, private people. People should be able to play golf and go on private, that's fine. I'm just thinking for the public ones.
I agree with you. I agree. I think that we did have some limitation for residency, even for private tennis. Is that right?
That's not, I'm sorry, Grace.
No, I think for private, no. I mean, I think with both golf, with golf and tennis, the idea was that members or residents of that HOA should be limited. But obviously, we wouldn't be checking anybody at the private side. But usually, those are the, at the HOAs, that's only, it's only HOA use anyway.
Great. Thank you. I think some of that changed from the first staff report to the second staff report. Thank you.
Confusion in reference to an HOA resident as opposed to a city resident.
Right. And I sort of had the same questions, like can it then an HOA resident not play with their sister singles at their HOA that they pay for? Again, it might really restrict who can play on private property in a way that you can't play with your, you know, yeah, sister or whatever it is. That's my concern is the HOA resident or the city resident is quite restrictive. So I agree with the mayor about the city tennis and pickleball because those are so limited.
Yeah. I think HOAs and private clubs can make up, they should decide if they want to allow this or not.
Agreed. I agree.
All right. But I think for the city, we should require, yeah. Okay. That's really helpful. Councilmember Woods, you haven't spoken. Do you want to weigh in?
Well, you know, I want to, I want to thank Councilmember Middleton and Gardner for what they've done. I think the questions are great. I think Councilmember hostages, unintended consequence questions were actually very good and thank you for those. And the mayor, I think you've asked great questions about face masks. The only thing that I might suggest is that the residency thing be just for pickleball and tennis because our golf course, I think, can handle people who are not residents. And it is a price point that many people like that they can't get elsewhere. So that would be my only other suggestion.
That's, I mean, that's fine with me. I think that there's also significant amount of golf courses around the valley, so we don't have that same concern as we do with pickleball especially because it's very popular in Palm Springs.
So what we're, what I think we're suggesting is on the public tennis courts and the public pickleball courts, that at least initially, it should be restricted to city residents.
Absolutely.
The golf courses, that's open to anyone. And what happens on a private course or within, or a private tennis community or a HOA, it's up to those organizations to set the rules for their, for their property and for their spaces.
I do want to raise one thing about the, I'm, I'm fine with there not being anybody at the tennis courts. That was just, as we had mentioned, something that we thought about. But just logistically then, for our public courses, would we still then require that residents call in and make a reservation? And then would we also ask that either code enforcement or staff have someone drive by and check in occasionally? Are we still?
I think that's a good way to do it. I think you need a reservation for the time periods you set so we don't have congregating there. You can't congregate. And yeah, I think staff, David, if you can figure out who can just check. And to some degree, it's going to be other people playing are going to need to help with the, you know, follow the rules because don't ruin it for everyone else because you're not following the rules. Because it's not, I agree with, you know, on the staff, I think the best thing would be just to check, right? To be checking in. People can call if there's a complaint. You know, they'll get an email with their confirmation of their time they could print out if they're, you know, need to. But I think that's a good method to do it. I like the reservations because it avoids 20 people. You know, once you're there, you're going to want to wait for the court if it's not with reservations.
One additional question on that, oh, sorry, is, you know, we did a list, specific times, playtime limited to seven in the morning to 11:00 a.m. and then six to nine p.m. Are, how do, how does everyone feel if somebody were to play during those off periods? Is that just something that they're kind of, they're choosing to be out in the heat, let them be out in the heat?
I think if there's, if we're not having staff there, right? I thought it made sense if we were going to require staff to be there. If people, you know, are in physical shape and they want to play when it's hotter, I think that's fine.
Okay.
Right? I think that would make sense. It's just, it was a staff issue, I think, is I assume why you did that.
That's true. That is initially why we did that. Okay. Thank you.
And if I could note, so just so I'm clear, you're going to require reservations and once they do that, you know, that's when we can determine whether they're a resident. However, without monitoring, we will have no idea of knowing that in the field. So there's a bit of a disconnect there, which is only an issue if there's a problem and we may not be able to resolve that problem every time, all the time. Obviously, if we get complaints, we can send code enforcement out and they could do a check or other parks workers to do the monitoring occasionally. But it would be a bit of a lag time. So it won't be a perfect system, but we could initially make sure that they're residents.
Right. And I think, David, with, when someone makes an appointment, they're going to send in the first time showing they're a resident to get an appointment. If someone goes and plays in, you know, at two in the afternoon or it's 115 degrees and there's no one, right? I mean, it's not going to be a problem, right? It's going to be a problem if someone with a reservation shows up and a non-resident's playing there and they're going to have to ask them to leave and hopefully that'll work out. But yeah, there's no perfect solution here. So, you know, we need to hope people do the right thing. We've seen that, I think as Councilmember Garner said, with the rules on so many things during this, our residents have really been exceptional as has our business community. And I think the numbers speak for that. And so people want this and I think they'll do the right thing. And, you know, if we have to check, we'll check. But let's, let's trust people to do the right thing here. If we want to move to swimming, does the subcommittee have a recommendation or is this just an?
I have an additional comment before we move on.
Yes, please.
So since, so part of the plan with having staff staff those amenities was they would be unlocking the courts and then locking them back up. With not having staff, then that will mean the courts will need to remain open the entire time. I just want to make sure we're clear on that one.
Sure. And then normally, do you lock them late at night and open them in the morning?
Well, normally, when we don't have the COVID going on, they stay open the entire time.
And what's your recommendation?
It would be really difficult to close them up at nine p.m. when I don't have staff around. I could work with parks, with the parks team to have them open for the seven a.m. play, but closing them back up in the evening would be difficult.
I'm not sure they need to be closed.
Yeah. If we have a problem, then we can address it.
I think if people want to play, you know, and personally, if I were to play, I would only play at 10:00 p.m. when no one else is around because I don't want to be, I'm not able to be around that many people even taking the risk. So I think leaving it open for folks is better and we want more time people can play that's more spread out versus a smaller amount of time where we'll have more concentration.
Just to clarify, Cynthia, what time do the lights actually go out at 11:00 p.m.? Okay. Thank you.
Oh, I can play, 10 to 11.
Great. But it would be helpful if we start with singles because it's going to get hotter and hotter. Although next week, we have some days with highs in the eighties. I know, right? That, you know, if park staff or code enforcement can drive by and make sure things are going well, so at the next council meeting or the subcommittee after a week thinks, oh, this is working fine, we can open it up to doubles, that would be great. I think in pickleball, singles in the heat is, given how short that court is, is going to be really tough. So if we can get that report back, I think that would help.
Would you be open to delegating to staff to make a decision as to when it's appropriate to allow doubles to be played on the public courses?
Yes.
I would be.
Yeah. Does everyone agree with that?
I think that's very important. I think we need to be, you know, with this, with things changing hourly, not even daily, but hourly, I think it's important that we be, remain nimble. And I think we need, under the executive order, the emergency order, give David some leeway to do something like what was just mentioned by Councilmember Middleton.
Yeah. I agree. And given our city manager doesn't like to do things he thinks council may not be on board with, you have a subcommittee you can check in with on it. So you feel you have at least two council members since you can't talk to more than two if you need input. But we want to give you that discretion. Does that work for you?
Yes. And if we could just finalize this, so we're all on the same page with expectation, and I would ask the city attorney and our Parks and Recreation Director is, what is the timeframe that we, you believe we can get this, what, the order, order done, Jeff? And then Cynthia, the ready to go, that we could announce that on what day this would start? What would be a reasonable time?
Block set up so that staff can begin taking the information. We can start taking the reservation from Monday, starting tomorrow, and then just make sure that the courts are ready to go because they do need to be cleaned off and prepped to receive the patrons.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. We can put on the website the number of folks to call for reservations or email as well. Maybe on the homepage at first so people have that would be great. Moving to swimming, just so folks know, because we got a lot of emails, the rule's about one person swimming at a time where the county, we're not allowed to do less restrictive than the state or the county. So we did advocate, several of us, for allowing a second person at least in the area for safety. I know Council Middleton did that. I had reached out to the county on people with disabilities or health issues who have a, whether it's a person in the household or a home healthcare worker who needs to go with them. So they were, you know, giving us flexibility there. Yesterday, late in the day, I think we got notice that they are now changing those guidelines. And I had asked the city attorney to see what the state is saying on this, and I don't know if we got any response or you have any idea on that yet.
We made an inquiry earlier this morning. I have not received word back from the state at this point.
Okay. So I think our options here are either we conform to the county unless we hear something different, or we keep what the county had before or we do something in the middle. So we'll open it up for thoughts. But I do think it was not even allowing household members to be together didn't make a lot of sense, given you're together 24/7 these days and not to be able to be in the pool together. It limited people's use of community pools in a major way. You know, there are some HOAs that expressed some concern because the county had said that they have to have sanitation plans. I think all that means, but I'll ask the city attorney, is the board should just approve, you know, we're going to, you know, residents are going to have to wipe down after each year. So the board will clean the railings every, you know, few hours. Whatever it may be, they need something. The county didn't specify what it was. So I don't know if you have any other thoughts on that for the city attorney who rolls perspective.
Yes, that question has come up quite a bit and staff in my office have received a number of inquiries from residents as well as HOA boards. The county appears to require a written disinfection plan, but you're absolutely right. It doesn't require hiring of additional staff. It could be done by existing HOA staff management. It could be done by the users of the pool themselves. It could be done by a band of volunteer members from the HOA. There's a wide variety of options that HOAs can use to implement this.
So they just need to have something in writing that they approve?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
This is something that Councilmember Garner and I spent a lot of time talking about. We felt pretty strongly that the county rules as existed a few days ago were inadequate in that families with children, that they should be able to be in the pool with their children and that it was frankly a safety issue for the family member to actually be in the pool with their children. That individuals from the same household certainly should be able to be in the swimming pool together. Seniors should be able to have someone else with them. Swimming alone is a safety issue. And there are many individuals who are disabled and have other kinds of health issues for whom swimming alone is not safe. So for all of those, we were prepared to recommend that if we could deviate from the county's rules, that we would do so. It now appears with what the county has done, that all of these recommendations that we had are ones that conform to the county rules. And we would like to make sure that those go forward. And I frankly think it's fairly clear as to who can, who can be in a pool together if we work in that fashion.
Yeah, I agree. And I think it is really important, especially for us in the valley, it's just
It's just very hard to not have that option, I think especially for people who, who need the pool for physical health and rehabilitation reasons, but also for all of those children who really want to jump in, this is their, their summer. The other thing though, I do want to just point out because I know that there was an issue in my district about this, each, each HOA can still decide whether or not they're going to open the pools. This obviously makes it easier for HOAs to open the pools with less, less enforcement issues, but it's still up to the HOA on whether or not they want to. And if there are problems with those pools, the HOA, like I've seen in my district, did shut it down again because people weren't following it. So that's just going to have to be up to, to them to determine how that moves forward.
Anyone else have a different view?
My, my read on the new regulations that came out from the county was that even if you're not related, you could be in the same pool if you kept social distancing.
Correct. The way I read it as well, and that makes sense to me. The other thing that is potentially in the county's rules, if the pool is roped off in, into lanes, that one person per lane, so you could, in much larger pools, have many people that were in the pool and you would still be maintaining social distancing.
Right. Because the way it was before, even the biggest pool, right, in the city, which, you know, if you think, we have very few hotels open for people who are here as emergency workers and things, you know, people who work in the airport, TSA agents, and the Renaissance has this enormous pool and they only could have one person in that whole pool at the same time, and their medical personnel also staying in those places. So I'm fine, I think we should try the county's rules and see how that goes. Both, you know, and I think for all of this, Palm Springs is doing much better than the county, right? I mean, when this started, we were having similar increases the first couple of weeks and, you know, now we had 4% increase since Sunday when the county had 14% and they're at least double or more, and they're doing better, way better than they were. And we haven't had a death since April 18th. And since Sunday, they've had a 19%, you know, increase in deaths. So it's because our residents have done a good job and so we really need to watch and, you know, the hospitals now in the Coachella Valley with Congressman Ruiz are putting out data every week and they were going to get us something today, which we didn't get, but we will get that regularly and make sure we share it because if we see that changing from these precautions being reduced, we, we may have to revisit this because this is how we're going to get things more open by people following the rules. And so I'm glad we're going to take some steps on these activities for folks, you know, especially people, you know, if you live yourself and you've been in isolation for this long, being able to, you know, play tennis or swim is a real, real benefit for people, for their mental health as well. There are a couple of other issues, I think, under this I wanted to raise. So one is, I think the county's May First rules on face coverings and social distancing, their requirements are good ones. They require it in all stores that are open. But I'd like to make sure that we make that requirement, right? If, if we don't fit it, I think we should try and fit it and if they make it a recommendation, not a requirement, I think we should keep it as a requirement. It's really important, one for our workers, but also 40% of our residents are 60 and over. We know we have many with compromised immune system and health issues. They're not going to go to the grocery store or any business if they feel unsafe because other people are not wearing masks who may be asymptomatic. And so I think for our economic benefit, to help our businesses and help our residents, we should keep those rules in place. So I want to get a sense of counsel on that, for direction. Anyone think differently?
I agree.
Everyone on board with that?
Our rules are making a difference and they are working.
The other thing is when we did the rules, we looked at grocery stores and pharmacies. I think we want to extend that to any of the, the bigger, the hardware stores, you know, the 40% occupancy. Lots of pictures people sent me from Lowe's and Home Depot that seemed crowded and feeling that they didn't feel safe there, but also the plexiglass for those should be broader and the signage shouldn't be limited just to Lowe's. Obviously, if it's curbside pickup, it's someone putting it in your trunk, but if you're going into the store, I think we should extend the rules to other businesses where people are going inside to protect workers. And the last thing, I think we, at least for me, that I want to make sure, given the governor has opened the start of phase two, which includes small retail and there's a long list, but most small retail, it's only allowed curbside. I know people said, why can't we do it by appointments and go in one at a time, but currently that's not allowed. If it is allowed, I think we can give direction to the city manager to do that, check in if we need to do a special meeting because there's some concerns, we will do that as well. But I'd like to see us do the start of phase two. The rules currently by the state for going further into phase two, which is in-person dining in restaurants and some other things, require no deaths in the county for 14 days, which seems a long way off. And I know the counties that are more urban are going to be reaching out to the governor to talk about that. Here in the Coachella Valley, we're starting to see that possible. We've done that in Palm Springs and we'll have to see how that will work because the county has a public health department. But, you know, it never seemed fair that people could go to a big box national brand and buy things and couldn't get curbside delivery with no contact from a small local business, which is the basis of our economy and what makes this a great place to live and visit. So I'm really happy to see that and I just want to, we don't have any rules against it, but I want to make sure counsel was all, from nodding, I can say yes, that we want to follow the governor's phase two, but Councilmember Garner?
Yeah, along with that, one thing that I would really like to see if we can explore this, David, is opening up the library for curbside pickup. I think if we can allow our residents to get some books, that would be amazing. So if, if that's possible to, basically it's just extending our reservation system for books and, and tweaking it a little bit to bring it out to you.
If I could respond to that, actually, the, the librarian has put together a plan and we were going to talk about this more on Monday, but to do both curbside pickup, but also there, there's a concern in the, the library commission and, and I share their concern that people need access to computers, particularly now for, for job applications and other things they need to apply for. And so we also have a plan where we have limited ability for people to come in, just use computers at, at certain spacing, a very few numbers, and then also curbside pickup. So we have a plan and can get going on that probably within the next few days if, if counsel is okay with that.
So I, I really like the idea. I have a question for the city attorney. Is that allowed under the state rules currently? And if not, if we're not sure, can we get that plan to them as well as the county to ask if we can, if we can get permission for that?
We, we, we can. I'll, I'll tell you, the governor's order left a lot of discretion to local governments in terms of determining what their public services are, essential services or not. So I, I think we have that discretion, but we can certainly, we can certainly ask the state.
Yeah, if you think we have it, let's move forward, but let's make sure we have all the social distancing, limited number of people, everything, but let's send it, let's send the plan to the state so they have it and if they object, they'll let us know.
I, I do think we do.
That's a great idea. Thank you, Councilmember Garner. Okay, staff need anything else on this issue or anyone else on council want to raise anything? Councilmember Garner?
Just because we've, we've talked about so many different things. So it's my understanding then that golf courses can open possibly tomorrow if we've already received their information and staff approves it, but staff has to approve it before they can open. That private tennis courts could open tomorrow, but that our public tennis pickleball courts will not be open until probably Monday to allow staff some time to do that. As far as pools, we're following a county order, which means that multiple people can be in the pool at one time as long as they're maintaining social distancing.
And the other thing I would add, and thank you, Councilmember Garner, is staff will work with the operator of the Talkwoods Creek Golf Course as to whether or not both courses need to be reopened and develop a plan around that.
Great.
And Mayor, I do have one other than item, just as long as we're reviewing. I want to let you know, so as you know, with regard to grocery shopping, our plastic bag ordinance, we, it's in our ordinance that it still requires use and as you, as you know, a, a lot of stores have loosened that requirement. We have done the same administratively, although it's against our ordinance. So I just wanted to brief you that, that we are not requiring people to take their own trash, or I'm sorry, their own grocery bags during the crisis.
Right, thank you. And I did have one other thing, which I forgot. So the issue has come up, it's the county repeals their ruling on short-term stays, vacation rentals, hotel motels through, currently you can't accept a reservation before June 19th, where I think May 31st currently.
Councilmember, Councilmember, I apologize, Councilmember Woods? Do you want, if we're going to talk about, you're on mute.
Oh, sorry. You have to put, Aaron, can you put Councilmember Woods into a silent room, please?
Aaron?
He's done. It's a great trick, I want this. Just put someone in a silent room, it's very cool. So on vacation rentals, from speaking for the city attorney, whether or not the county has their rules or us, leisure travel is still not allowed in California, as I understand it. You only can leave home for one of the approved activities or essential businesses. So vacation rentals and hotels and motels can be open for homeless, for COVID-19 related reasons only. So if the county repeals theirs, people can't start renting short-term out in Palm Springs?
Correct, we still, correct, we still have our, our order, which goes till the end of May, May 31st. So if the council wishes to extend that tonight into June, you certainly can. Otherwise, we'll have another opportunity at the May 21st meeting if, if you'd like to review it at that time.
My explanation is let's see where we are then because things keep changing and, oh, Mayor, press and hostage.
Thank you, I agree. I think we should wait, but just to be clear, because people think we have way more power than we do, they think we can open up essential businesses that the state has defined or non-essential businesses. People are upset about nail salons and things like that, but a lot of that is on the state. So same with vacation rentals, right, that there is some information in the state orders that for hotels and vacation rentals, that those are limited to essential use, right?
Correct. In fact, even today, the governor's direction in terms of moving to the next phase reiterated that hotels and lodging facilities for, for leisure purposes are, are not essential.
So essentially, we have to wait for the state to take action, even if the county rescinds, even if we rescinded ours, the state is in charge of opening vacation rentals and hotels?
Correct.
Thanks.
Okay.
If I, if I might, when, when, I don't know if we're done with vacation rentals or short-term lodging?
I, one quick comment. We're going to meet again on the 21st, so we have an opportunity to rediscuss this before our order would end on the May 31st. But if the county were to do away with their rules, I think we need to get back together as soon as possible to revisit what should we do in light of what the county does. And I am hopeful and am on record that they maintain the rules that they've had in place.
Yeah, so, well, it's just on vacation rentals, if they got rid of theirs, we're still under the state rules. So we have time for the next meeting, I think for all those things. But yeah, why don't we bring free, free Councilmember Woods, free Dennis?
If I can go on that point, not related to vacation rentals, but the county orders?
Yep.
Thank you. So we talked about face covering and so we had consensus that we would require, we should require face coverings in our own city in, in case the county rescinds their order. And then does that also include social distancing or is social distancing already required under our orders? Those were the urgent issues that the county might rescind that was so dangerous, in my opinion, is rescinding the face masks and the social distancing that's currently required, but only recommended by the state, right?
Right, we, we require social distancing and face coverings in essential businesses, including essential construction, but we don't really have an order dealing with face coverings just in, in public in general. So if we want to mirror that, then, then we certainly can come up with that language tomorrow.
Yeah, sounded like we had council direction to do for both. I was asking for both face coverings and social distancing, right?
Yes, and it should, I think it should mirror what the county is currently requiring, not what they were requiring before where if you were walking by yourself, you had to wear it outside or exercising, you have to have it on if you're going to be within six feet of someone else. Yeah, so I agree absolutely on that. And just nail salons also, if people didn't watch the governor today because he was asked about that. He said, you know, and we've heard from a lot of, you know, nail salons and other salons that they really do understand disinfecting and, I mean, that's part of their license. And the governor noted, and it's where he's coming from, the first case in California was in the nail salon that followed all those rules, right? Someone was wearing a mask, it's the person-to-person contact. That said, at some point, those, if those don't get, you know, loosened, we're going to have a lot of financial hardship and problems. So, but currently, we, we couldn't do it even if we decided we wanted to. And the county has goals, for the first time today, real, real goals with numbers, how, what number has to be tested, what the hospitalization is. All those metrics the governor talked about, he actually gave real numbers to. So there's something to shoot for and I think it's really, you know, important that we do everything we can to encourage the county and they are, they've increased testing. We finally have a West Valley test site in Desert Hot Springs. We've asked for one in Palm Springs too, or Cathedral City. It's really was hard for our residents, people, especially people who work or people who don't drive to get to India or Coachella. So we're glad the state is now having two in the, you know, one in Mecca and one in Desert Hot Springs. So they are increasing them, which is a good thing. Is there anything else?
If I could, counsel, I, I was talking to staff when I think there may have been consensus on extending the protections for grocery and, and retail drugstores to other essential businesses. Was there consensus on counsel to do that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
But not, not the curbside checkout businesses, don't need to have plexiglass or, you know, we're talking about the hardware stores, those kind of businesses.
Okay.
I think you said in-person shopping.
Yeah, in-person shopping, right?
Or in-person visitation in a business.
Yeah, so when, when people are going into a business that's currently, that's essential. And it's worked very well so far in the grocery stores and pharmacies. I've seen signage in a lot of, you know, businesses when I bike and I think the signage really does help and it gives them tools as well.
Would we want a size requirement? I'm thinking, my definition doesn't work, so I said in-person, you know, but that could be like an ice cream shop that has one person going in at the same time, very different. We're trying to solve the hardware store that has 50 people in it, that people aren't socially distancing. Maybe the city attorney can come up with some limit.
You get our idea.
He's smarter than us, he's got it. He's got it.
Okay.
Are we going to need a motion?
Direction enough?
I think we've got direction. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Mayor, and one final thing I would note, not exactly sure where it originated, but we did get, I think it was from a couple of council members, a request to do a COVID-19 fiscal relief letter for both the state and local governments. So we would, if it's okay, we would agendize that at the meeting on Monday with the budget discussion. It would fit, fit well there. And that, and I think that is in addition to the letter that you had, Mayor. And so I'll get a little clarification on that, but we can bring that forward on Monday.
Yeah, just a letter to federal government on the bill that currently wouldn't be great for us, let's just say. Right now, the way the federal legislation is looking is it's cities under 50,000 will get a certain amount population-based, unrelated to their, the impact in revenue, directly related to COVID-19. And so we want to work on, we have a draft letter on that laying out our situation. Councilmember Garner?
One thing that I wanted to ask of staff as well on this, is there's been some people reaching out to me regarding schools and the school districts and what they're doing and how all of that's going to work with reopening of schools. And it might be probably too soon right now to discuss, but I am wondering if at a later meeting, this one, at least Palm Springs Unified and maybe even getting some information from the others, can just let us know what they're doing and what their plans are, just to kind of reach more of our residents and let them know what's going on.
Great. Okay, so the next item is public comment on non-agenda items. This time it's been set aside for members of the public to address the city council on items of general interest within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city. Although the city council values your comments pursuant to the Brown Act, it generally cannot take any action on items not listed on the agenda. Two minutes will be assigned to each speaker. Tonight, the city clerk will be contacting speakers via telephone. Public comment.
Mr. Mayor, I have Darrell Torrell on the line. Darrell, you have two minutes to make your comments. Thank you.
All righty. Good evening. Hospitality and tourism industries, as well as janitors and security guards who work in your airport and downtown, have been hit among the hardest by this crisis. As a result, many of them have been laid off or furloughed and are now trying to make ends meets without pay. Putting these folks back to work may seem like a long way off, but we have to start preparing for it now. Skilled workers who lost their job need to be the first ones to be rehired. In other words, those folks with decades of experience and serenity, who support families and communities, cannot be the victims when we get back to work of people who are either newer or pay less being hired underneath them. So we need to protect them. That's why earlier today, I submitted, I submitted electronically to the city clerk's office, a proposed workers' job protection ordinance that would create a right of recall and worker retention that would give them a basic level of respect. If you lose your job because of COVID-19, you will have a chance to get your job back when the business reopen. If you're, if the business you worked for got sold through no fault of your own, the new company must hire you back. And that's simple. It's the only fair thing to do. Tourism hospitality industries, it's one of the reasons your community is like no place else, because of these hardworking men and women. After all, what is good, what is good if you have a branded image, if you cannot maintain it? What good is it that you have nine communities without janitors and housekeepers to keep the facilities clean? So so many of these displaced workers in these industries, these two proposed ordinances will give them a reason to hope again and at a moment of so much uncertainty. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, and we'll disconnect now. Mr. Mayor, that concludes public comment.
And Mr. Mayor, could I ask one final question, just for clarification? We had a question at staff, just on the golf. I want to make sure that, so for the public golf course, it's allowed for residents and non-residents. I just want to confirm that. It's just pickleball and tennis that is for residents?
I believe it was for pickleball and tennis on city facilities.
Facilities, yes.
It was the only residency requirement.
Right, city facilities, okay.
Correct, but I would give staff discretion if we keep one golf course of the two open, if that's the decision, and there's more people who want to play, that city residents get priority on the city golf course.
Understood.
So use your discretion on how to manage that.
And we included part-time and full-time residents.
Yes.
Got it.
So the next item is city council and city manager requests for upcoming agenda development. Councilmember Woods?
When I was on the planning commission, one thing that I had noted was we had a propensity of sign variances that would come in. And I had suggested at the point, and I'm not sure it went anywhere, that we come up with a creative sign ordinance to allow maybe more creative signs and we have some guidelines. And I know some other cities such as West Hollywood has, and I believe LA does too, has this type of, an ordinance where you can get a very creative sign and not necessarily always have to go for a variance. And I guess I'm asking staff if they could work on something of that nature, if it's agreeable to the rest of the council.
Yes, would you like to be the liaison to that, Councilmember Woods?
I can certainly be the liaison, Mr. Mayor.
I think it just helps given, you know, with staff, if there's someone on the council who's working with them directly and giving your background, and I think that would be a great thing to work on. And I think in your working, when we're working on that, we, you know, I was also gotten a request about looking at how we're going to handle, if there are businesses that are closing for lease signs and being a little creative on that. So maybe that's a time to do, look at that as well. So always get to have an idea. You get more work. Okay, any other requests for upcoming agenda development?
Mayor, I would note that at the meeting on Monday, in addition to the budget update, it's also going to be a discussion on our block grant. And again, that's not the public hearing, that will come at the following meeting. But the, the discussion will be, continued discussion on expenditures with the, the added COVID block grant that was added. There'll be a discussion and we'll get direction on how council wants us to appropriate those dollars as well. And so that will be Monday.
Great.
And I would also note that we're working, trying to finalize the staff report for that budget update and our goal is to make sure that it is, is out and noticed to the public by tomorrow, late tomorrow afternoon.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question on that, Mr. Mayor? We've gotten a lot of requests about the CDBG funding, so everything from rent relief programs, the business relief or loans to small businesses, to obviously the city has some needs as well. So is it just going to be a general discussion on Monday?
Yes, it'll be a general.
We can inform the public about what's happening and when.
It will be a general discussion and we outline in the staff report, the kinds of COVID things it can be used for, and the examples you used are eligible. As a matter of fact, for, you could use all of your, the additional, you could use all of your block grant money, which is around the 450 and an additional almost 300, you could use all of that for COVID-related if you cared to do so. But, so we'll outline what the possibilities are, you'll give us direction. However, it will still have to go through the public hearing, which would be at the following meeting before we're able to formally spend those dollars. So this will be the first of a two-step process next, on Monday.
Great, thank you. To Councilmember Woods's point about the creative sign program related, the, we had asked, I think the full council or a few of us had asked before about an analysis of which ordinances were enforcing and which fines and fees and which ones we might want to waive during this time. So I'm not sure if that's just happened at the administrative level with staff or if there's something that needs to come before council to make any formal decisions about waiving any fines and fees or other kind of programs, like the sign program, we got a request to allow, yeah, more leniency than we have. So I don't know if that needs to be a future agenda item or if staff has taken care of it administratively, but I'd like to have that discussion at some point.
I think, Mr. Mayor, what we could do is, we certainly have, have backed off administratively on, on several of our implementation areas for, for the reasons that you had stated, Mayor Protem. And what I could do is, at the next meeting, I certainly could give you an update on that. And if you want some additional things, you could give me direction and we have the ability to do it administratively.
That'd be great, thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, so we will adjourn this meeting. A special city council meeting will be held on Monday, this next Monday, May 11th at 6:00 PM regarding the city's budget. And the next regular city council meeting will be held on Thursday, May 21st, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Thank you, everyone. Good night, stay well, please.